Good evening, I'd be happy to do a sound check.
Thank you, you sound excellent.
How's it sounding?
Great.
Right.
Testing, testing.
Thank you, yep, sounds great. So just, oh, there's councillor Boyle.
Hi Katrina, how are you?
Hey, great.
How's the little one?
Oh, she's good.
Good.
Starting to get away from us easily because she's on two legs now.
Oh yeah. Gets harder.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five.
One more.
Mayor, do we have a sense of, is somebody reaching out to the councillors who are missing? Or a sense of when we might begin?
Well, we need six. And we said it a number of times today, we started at 6pm, so. First, I see councillor Dominado is, I see her name on the, there you are, councillor Dominado. So we have six of us now. I think we can go. So clerks, I'm going to start rolling here.
Okay, we're ready.
Okay, thanks, I'm going to call to order this public hearing of September 21st. Council, for purposes of confirming we have quorum, please ensure your video is turned on. And that's really important right now, since there's just so few of us. Maintain the quorum, quorum is maintained throughout the meeting. Please let the clerk know if you are leaving the meeting as well. This meeting is convened by electronic means, as authorized under order number M192. Having tried all types of hearing today, from the chambers, from my office, and now from home. This, I'll be participating this way. And if our connections are lost during any portion of this meeting, as it's a public hearing, we'll recess the meeting until the connection is restored. Members of public can view the proceedings via the live stream and YouTube, which is, will be tweeted out @Vancityclerk. Video of council members speaking, presentations, amendments, and vote results were projected to viewers when available. Of course, we acknowledge we're in the unseated traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Wautuths people, and thank them for having care for this land, and we're enjoying working with them in partnership as we build this great city together. And big shout out to all our staff at the city who do such an awesome job, day in and day out. Can we have the roll call, please clerk?
Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr. Councillor Carr is not on, councillor DeGenova. Not on, councillor Frye.
Present.
Councillor Swanson. Councillor Swanson. Might be muted.
Councillor Swanson.
Here, I'm here.
Thank you, councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb is on a leave of absence for civic business. Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominado.
Present.
Councillor Bly. Not on, and councillor Kirby Young.
Present.
You have quorum, mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. Okay, so. Following updated guidance issued September 10th, there is a maximum allowable capacity for public in-person participation permitted in the council chamber for local government meetings. As of August 25th, masks are mandatory in all public spaces, even if you are vaccinated until further notice. The public may participate by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to mayor and council. Virtual participation is highly encouraged, as there is capacity limits within City Hall. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments, and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Also need to state whether you're in support or opposed to the recommendations, and if you are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once, and should follow along on Twitter @Vancityclerk for updates on the progress of the meeting, so you don't miss your turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online web form at vancouver.ca-public-hearing-comments, and the link is also on Twitter. Those speaking on behalf of other persons or groups will have eight minutes to speak, but only if those represented are also present or on the line, and must not be speakers themselves. Those represented should confirm they are on the line. Speakers who are pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay to navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next, and I'll help with that as necessary. Also want to note that the city of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. Just to remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gendered honorifics, and will instead refer to the person by their first and last name, role, or title. Reminder that council's role at public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is only to consider the merits of the resoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker. After hearing from speakers, council may approve the application in principle, refuse the application, or refer the application to staff for further consideration. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we'll recess and reconvene on Thursday, September 23rd at 6pm. So we're going to move to our first item of business, which is the internal development application and permitting modernization task force zoning and development bylaw amendments to enable issuance of a building permit for excavation and shoring before a development permit. Anybody want to declare a conflict of interest on this item? I don't hear anybody? So the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received. Go ahead, clerks.
There is an application by the general manager of planning, urban design, and sustainability to amend section four of the city of Vancouver zoning and development bylaw. To enable a building permit, limited in scope to excavation and shoring, to be issued before the development permit. If approved, these amendments will provide additional flexibility in construction scheduling for eligible projects, limited to those including social housing or secured market rental housing, institutional uses, and select culture and recreational uses. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing, and prior to the close of the speaker list, and we see the public comments. One piece of correspondence in support, this represents all correspondence received up to 5pm today.
Thanks so much. So if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by code 53483-POUND before the close of the speakers list. A phone number is on Twitter and on the live stream. And we have Theresa O'Donnell, general manager of planning, urban design, and sustainability here to provide opening comments to the application. Over to you, head planner.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Theresa O'Donnell, I'm the general manager for planning, development, and urban design, and sustainability. And with me tonight is Andrea Law, our general manager of building, development, buildings, and licensing. Also Paul Schwab, our acting chief building official, and a number of staff from both PDS, DBL, and engineering department. I'll walk you through a brief presentation to talk about what we're doing, but this is some of the additional work that Andrea, or Andrew is discussing with council today. This has been developed with the internal task force, and we are happy to bring this recommendation to council today. What this essentially does is allow for a building permit to be issued prior to a development permit. All construction in the city is sequential, and typically, a building permit would only follow a development permit. However, there are a number of projects that proceed very quickly through our process, and they don't have the flexibility to receive a building permit to start that excavation early. And so this would enable that. It would be only enabled if it was allowed by the director of planning in consultation with the GM of DBL and engineering, and I'll go through that. But what this would do is allow for that issuance of that building permit early. It would be limited to just a very few number of eligible projects. Typically, cultural and recreational uses, like libraries, artist studios, dwelling, social housing, residential uses like social housing or secured market rental, and institutional uses, school, hospital, social service. The benefits, of course, particularly for affordable housing, is it allows those projects earlier access to financing. Often, their financing might be linked to the issuance of a building permit, so it would allow those projects to get started early, in terms of clearing their site and excavation, and access that much needed financing. We do have a number of conditions that would have to be complied with. The first of all would, first would be the submission of a certified professional. Second, they'd have to meet all the conditions that are required to obtain an excavation and shoring permit. Third, they'd have to be able to meet all of the development permit conditions, particularly those that have to deal with any kind of groundwater or hydrological study. Fourth, and very important to this council, I know, is there could be no existing residential tenant on site prior to the excavation. And in some cases, we would ask for a letter of credit to cover any cost of returning to the site to pre-excavation condition in case they're, the project people. We have had quite a bit of interest, of course, from a broad number of development community folk in the flexibility of the processing time. We've heard this need expressed through our development advisory group, through regulation redesign, and our process regulation redesign, so there is high interest from the development community. The process, if the council so chose to approve this tonight, applicants would be invited to connect with their project facilitator at the DP stage to discuss their eligibility, and we could certainly review those things. Again, it would be the director of planning in consultation with the chief building official, city engineer, and the director of legal services. That's our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks so much. I do have councillor Swanson on the list for questions, councillor Swanson, go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yeah, so I'm old enough to remember when we had a lot of what we called back in the 70s or 80s, MRB holes. MRB standing for multiple unit residential building. It was some sort of federal tax shelter where if developers dug the hole, they could get the shelter. And then the holes sat and filled up with water for sometimes several years before anything got built. So I'm just wondering, I mean, my only concern with this is, does granting the permission to do the excavation and shoring imply that the other, that the other permit is going to come? And, yeah, even when the conditions might not have been met?
That's a great question, and one of the reasons that we wanted to secure a letter of credit to cover the cost of the excavation, should the city be in the position that we have to step in and fill that excavated site, and return it to a pre-excavation condition? That's exactly right. And, and we would not issue the building permit unless we believed that the DP was issuable, that they were able to satisfy all requirements of the DP, but they hadn't worked through all of the agreements that were necessary. But that's an excellent condition. It's one of the reasons we'd also require not only director of planning, but engineering, DBL, and legal services to review and all agree that this was a permit that was issuable, and that we felt confident that they would be able to complete the work.
And this is one of the things that you're proposing that you think will speed up the development permit process?
We do think it will speed up development permit process, and I think more importantly, it will give those projects that are seeking funding from higher levels of government access to those funds earlier. Often, those nonprofit developers don't have access to interim financing, mezzanine financing. And so being able to access those funds quicker, we've heard, would be, would be a great advantage for those folks, particularly.
And you, and you don't think we'd have big, huge holes all over the city filling up with water for years and years?
No, we'd, we'd be able to access that letter of credit so that we could do that ourselves, and reimburse the city for the call. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Swanson? Just, whoops. Now we got councillor Hardwick next, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Thanks very much. I understand that what we're trying to do here is to balance against some internal slow permitting processes. What, what checks and balances will we have in place to prevent those kinds of nightmare scenarios where you do end up with holes in ground? And, you know, this is something I understand that, that most developers would be looking at very carefully, but, you know, how do we ensure that we don't end up with those ones slipping through the cracks? You know what I mean?
Oh yeah, absolutely. I, I think a number of things. One, this is eligible only to a very limited group of users. Just cultural and recreational uses, so libraries, museums, parks. Residential uses developed as social housing or secured market rental housing. So a stratified development would not be eligible for this. And then institutional uses, the schools, and hospitals, social service centers. So you have a very limited group of users that will be eligible for this. And then again, I think our, our list of conditions, one, it would have to be submitted by a certified professional. They would have to be able to meet all the conditions required to meet that excavation permit anyway, right? So they'd have to satisfy all the conditions of the excavation and shoring permit. That they would have to meet all of the development permit conditions. They may have not have entered into all the agreements and some of those things that take a little bit longer, but they've been able to meet the conditions to do that. And then, and we have that letter of credit, which we can access, and we can ensure that that site, the hole gets refilled, and the site is returned to a pre-excavation condition. That's, I think that's our most powerful one right there.
Now, on the, the social housing, we're, we're still dealing with our somewhat bizarre definition of social housing in the 30, 80,000 annual salary range, right?
That is correct.
Okay. That's a whole nother can of worms, but thanks for answering my questions.
Thank you. Councillor Boyle.
Thanks, I also just have a sort of order question, which relates to the tenant relocation and protection policy. Can you just remind council, or let me know where in the process if we're allowing excavation ahead of a building permit? I assume before any digging is happening, before all of the TRPP requirements are being adequately met? And there's no difference in terms of, in the process, in terms of how any previous tenants are being taken care of?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, right, that's the, the confirmation I was looking for, thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have councillor Kirby Young. Clerks? I have councillor Kirby Young on the list, but is she in chambers perhaps?
One moment, mayor, she's in chamber, we're just trying to adjust the microphone.
Okay, great, thanks.
Great, okay, thanks, I'll go ahead, because I have a mic now.
Already a timer there? There we go, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So question to staff, and you mentioned sort of cultural uses, libraries, things, you know, social housing projects, things of that nature. Just to clarify, something significant, such as the Vancouver Art Gallery, new Vancouver Art Gallery renewal, that this would enable a project like that to move forward as well, and, and aiding them in securing their funding based on the fact that they could have this affirmation as a funding criteria?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so a pretty broad range of arts and cultural uses, nothing excluded, or anything, any outliers that might not be included?
Not that we're aware of, we didn't intentionally exclude anyone. So no, that was not our intention, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you, I just want to confirm the bag would qualify, appreciate it.
Thanks. That's it for questions from staff, so can we have somebody move the, oh sorry, there are no speakers, I think clerk to this item either, right? So I have to go through the list here. Clerks, can you remind me, I'm supposed to do my three calls though, right?
Correct, there are no registered speakers, but you do need to go through the process.
Right, thanks very much. So if there are any speakers to this item who wish to speak to council, and this is the first call, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by code 53483-POUND before the close of the speakers list. Phone number is on Twitter, and made available on the live stream. Clerks, I'm just going to check on this first call, if there's anybody on the line or in the chambers.
There are no speakers on the line or in chamber, mayor.
Okay, the awkward second call for additional speakers, 1-833-353-8610, code 53483-POUND. And I take it no one's joined in 30 seconds?
No, no speakers, mayor.
Okay, I'll do my third call for speakers and council, we will take a five-minute break. It is 6:25, we'll come back at 6:30, just to make sure people have a chance to register to speak if they wish to. Hey clerk, my grandfather's clock is telling us it's 6:30. So I'm going to make my, just going to ask you if there's anybody else who's phoned in for this item.
You're just checking on speakers, mayor?
Yeah, just checking if there's anybody who called in.
No speakers, mayor.
Okay, great, thanks so much. Okay, council, so as there are no speakers to this, the list is now closed. And as few or no public comments received in this item after 5pm today, we're going to close the receipt of public comments and move to hearing closing comments, or ask further questions to staff. uh, or ask, uh, further questions to staff and to make a decision. Um, staff have any closing comments?
No, Mayor. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Uh, council, any questions for staff? I don't see anybody on the queue. So can I have a mover for this item?
So moved.
Thanks. Uh, Council Dominado seconded by Council Fry. Um, we're going to move us over to the main queue. Any debate on this one? Don't see anybody on the main queue, so I'm going to move us to the vote. Clerks could queue that up. If anybody needs, uh, vote assist, please let me know.
Mayor, uh, it's Council Carr. I need a vote assist in favor, please.
Okay. Thank you, Council Carr. That's been marked. Looking for Council Boyle. Council Boyle?
Okay, I thought it had gone through.
Well, there you are. Yep, thanks. Uh, that is unanimous. Thanks very much, uh, council.
Point of personal privilege.
Go ahead, uh, Councilor Carr.
It's Hardwick actually, but I just wanted to note that the captioning, um, the, the new captioning that we're seeing, uh, is interesting. It's in its interpretation of our words. And I, I just wondered if, uh,
Great to ask.
Staff were on top of, of that. Is this a permanent new feature or how will it be, uh, monitored?
Maybe the clerks can just fill us in on what's happening.
Council, right now, we're just, uh, doing, this is the first night, we're just doing a test. Um, so there'll definitely be some kinks to work out and we'll follow up by email with council with updates, um, on, on all the techs, tech related updates we're doing here in the chamber.
Thank you.
Okay, that's good. Uh, thanks for explaining that. The public probably wondered what, uh, what we're doing today too. So that's good. Uh, let's move to item number two, which is eight three five to eight three seven BD Street Anglo Canadian Warehouse Company Building Heritage Designation. And I'm going to ask first if anybody has a conflict of interest on this item. And I don't hear any, so we're going to move to the clerk reading the application.
There is an application by General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability, to bring forward for enactment a bylaw to designate as protect the heritage property, the structure and exterior of the existing building at eight three five to eight three seven BD Street, knowing as Anglo Canadian Warehouse Company Building, which is listed under Vancouver Heritage Register in the C evaluation category. The foreign correspondence has been received since referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receive a public comment. Two pieces of correspondence and support. This represents all correspondence received up to five PM today.
Okay. Thank you so much. And, uh, I'm going to stop reading the closed captioning because it's not quite there. Um, let's see. Uh, great. So if there's any speakers to this item which to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, code 53483 pound. Before the close of the speakers list, we have James Bolt, uh, Heritage Planner here to, uh, to talk to us.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is James Bolt, Heritage Planner with the Heritage Group. Uh, it is a long, uh, agenda tonight. I'm prepared to waive presentation if council wishes.
Okay. I'll just ask council, does anybody wish to see the presentation? I don't hear anybody, so let's go right to questions then. Anybody with questions to staff about this item? Don't, anybody on the queue? Uh, clerks, I believe we, oh, Council Hardwick, uh, up to five minutes. Please go ahead. Well, you're on mute perhaps?
Yeah, actually, i- if there were no questions, I was going to make, uh, move adoption.
I have to, uh, do the regular call for speakers and I'm just checking here. We don't have any registered speakers, but I do have to call three times, uh, because of, by the charter rules. So I'll do that and then there'll be a chance to move it. Uh, so let me call the first time. If there's any speakers to this item, please call 1-833-353-8610, code, uh, three five three, uh, sorry, five three four eight three pound. And that's on Twitter and the live stream. Clerks, do we have anybody on the line or chambers for this item?
No speakers in the chamber or, or online, Mayor.
Okay. Number two, same pitch, 1-833-353-8610, five three four eight three hashtag pound, whatever you like. Um, anybody there, clerks?
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay. So this is the third call, uh, same phone number, same code. Uh, council, we are at six thirty-five.
Here's Mayor.
Great. Okay. Council Hardwick, uh, fire away. But you're moving the motion?
I would like to move the motion.
Second, Council Kirby Young.
Thanks, uh, Council Kirby Young. Um, you know, I forgot to read the script beforehand. Sorry, I'm a little rusty here. I, I just have to officially confirm that no public comments received on this item after five PM today. So we're going to close the receipt of public comments and move on the, uh, moving, uh, to hear qu- further questions from council. Sorry, Council Hardwick, I jumped the gun there. So I'm going to go to staff. Uh, any closing comments on this item?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, no closing comments.
Thanks very much. Uh, council, are there any questions on this one? I don't see any. Um, okay. So Council Hardwick, you've moved it. Uh, Council Kirby Young has seconded, uh, any debate on this item? I don't see any, so we'll move to the vote. Council Boyle, just waiting for... There we go. Uh, so that's passed unanimously. Thanks, council. We're on to item three, which is the CD one rezoning on two nine two nine Commercial Drive. Just, uh, checking to see if anybody has a conflict on this item. I don't hear anyone, so we'll move to the clerks reading the applications.
There is an application by Matthew Chan Architects to rezone five one five West Sixtieth Avenue from RS one district to RM eight nine district to permit a townhouse development of a maximum floor space ratio of one point two. If rezonings approved, a subsequent development permit process will include review of a proposed form of development. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Designs and Sustainability recommends approval subject to a condition set out in the summary and recommendation of public hearing agenda. The foreign, the foreign correspondence have been received since referred to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receive a public comment. One piece of correspondence in opposition, and this represents all correspondence received up to five PM today.
A point of privilege, Mayor.
Sure. Uh, Council Carr?
Yes, um, I'm sorry. I'm a bit confused. Um, I thought I heard you say we were on seventy, seventy, seventy-fourty-ninth, but it was introduced as five one five West Sixtieth. Could you please confirm what item we're on?
Yeah, I read out, um, item number three, which is actually two nine two nine Commercial Drive. Just checking for clerks where we're at with, uh, with items. I, I'm just re- looking at my script and it says item number three. CD one zoning on two nine two-
Uh, Mayor, that's, that's, that's a typo in the script. It's actually five one five West Sixtieth.
All right. Just checking to see. Oh, you know, I, yeah, I don't have that one at all. So, uh, so, yeah, sorry, Councilor Carr. So, um, could you repeat the, uh, address, um, clerks?
Sure. It's five one five West Sixtieth Avenue.
Okay.
It's a rezoning.
Everybody okay with, uh, where we're at? Okay, thanks. Um, so if there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, uh, the number is 1-833-353-8610, code, uh, five three four eight three pound. And, uh, this is for five one five West Sixtieth Avenue. We have Austin, uh, I hope this is right. I'm not sure if it is. Austin Norrie from the rezoning center. Is that correct?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council. Yes, it is Austin Norrie. Um, I just want to mention that, um, this is actually proposal for, uh, presentation for two of the townhouse rezoning applications on the council agenda this evening. It's, um, a single presentation, um, that we're offering, um, that can be given at the moment.
Okay. Please, uh, are, does anybody wish to see the presentation?
Uh, no, but just another point of privilege, Mr. Mayor. Um, my screen, um, shows a request to speak for two nine two nine Commercial Drive. So I'm just confirming that that's incorrect and everything is for five one five West Sixtieth.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the public screen and it says, uh, the, the public screen shows the presentation, five one five West Sixtieth. Um, but, and the clerks are correcting the error.
All right. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Council Hardwick, I think I saw your hand for the presentation. Oh, sorry, you're on mute, but I think I saw yes please by lip reading. So, okay, great. So, uh, please go ahead, uh, with the presentation.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to specify that this is a townhouse presentation for both that are on for this evening. So it's five one five West Sixtieth Avenue and seven two one to seven three five West Forty-Ninth Avenue. And, um, the two applications, um, are coming forward to council under the Canby Corridor Plan today. They're applications under a simplified rezoning process. The simplified process was developed in order to circu- secure utility upgrades to accommodate additional growth within the Canby Corridor. Since these proposals are to rezone the sites to either the RMAA or other RMAN district schedule, no form of development is required at the rezoning stage. And instead, public feedback for the proposed form of development will occur during the development permit phase. This simplified process reduces the processing time for a townhouse rezoning application, so it can reach public hearing in approximately seventy-eight months. The townhouse proposal at five one five West Sixtieth Avenue is located in the Marple neighborhood of the Canby Corridor. The townhouse proposed at seven two one, seven three five West Forty-Ninth Avenue is located within the Canby Corridors Langara neighborhood. Each proposal is for a stacked townhouse or row house at three stories with a maximum floor space ratio of one point two. The townhouse application along West Sixtieth Avenue consists of one single thing, uh, family detached home. It's located west of Canby Street and is one block south of the site known as Pearson Dogwood. The townhouse along West Forty-Ninth Avenue consists of two single family detached homes and is located along an arterial street. The site is just west of Annie B. Jamison Elementary School, which is located at the intersection of Forty-Ninth and Tisdale Street. These sites do not have rental tenants living on the properties, as such, no rental tenant relocation is necessary. Earlier this year, postal notifications were sent out within a two-block radius of the properties. A total of approximately six hundred and fifty postal notifications were circulated for the townhouse on Sixtieth Avenue, while roughly over a thousand postal notifications were mailed out for the townhouse at Forty-Ninth Avenue. From the rezoning notification, no correspondence or feedback was received through the City Shave Your City webpage. To conclude, these proposals align with the Canby Corridor Plan and would join one of approximately four, um, approximately forty townhouse projects that have been approved since plan's adoption in twenty eighteen. If approved, the projects will provide funding towards the Canby Corridors of a benefit strategy and would contribute to the number of jobs in the area that are consultant instruction or supplier-based. And in terms of, uh, staff, um, they recommend approval of these townhouse rezoning applications along with the conditions of approval outlined in Appendix B of the referral reports. Staff as well as the applicant team for the first townhouse at one five one five West Sixtieth Avenue are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you very much for that. The clerk just wants to remind me that while the presentation is joint, the applications need to be considered separately to, to meet our, uh, conditions of the Vancouver Charter. So we'll do one at a time, but we have the presentation together because they're very similar. That makes sense. Um, okay. Uh, so I'm just going to go to questions now. Are there any questions from council to staff? Uh, Council Hardwick?
Yes, I understand, stand in reviewing again the, the referral report, uh, where it sets the council authority previous decisions. I don't see the Housing Vancouver Strategy listed as one of those previous decisions. Is that intentional?
Hello, we have a team fan on the line, Senior Planner.
Thanks, Council Hardwick, for that question. Um, this, uh, is coming in under the Canby Corridor Plan as the enabling policy. We haven't intentionally listed the Housing Vancouver, uh, Canby Corridor, uh, plan came in, I believe, ahead of the Housing Vancouver Strategy and that's the rezoning policy that enables these specific townhouses today.
So, um, further to that, uh, these applications are, uh, generating revenue for the amenities, uh, plan in the Canby Corridor Plan. Um, I know that we're treating each one of these separately, but- I know that we're treating each one of these separately, but what is the aggregate revenue generated from these townhouses?
Thank you for your question councillor. The CAC is also known for the, as the DBZ, the density bonus contribution is applied for townhouses and the money would be going towards the Canby Public Benefit Strategy. And for 151, one, sorry, 515 West Sixtieth Avenue, it would be 130,000 roughly going towards the Canby Public Benefit Strategy and for 721 to 735 West Forty-Ninth Avenue, it'd be 380,000 roughly.
Thank you. Have you contemplated the land inflation value that will be triggered by this rezoning? What's the current assessed value versus the assessed value after rezoning?
Sorry councillor, we have not done that assessment and I would not know the appropriate answer.
Okay, well, this is a larger conversation about upward inflation through rezoning in this area, but I'll park my questions there for now, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Swanson, go ahead, up to five minutes, questions for staff. Am I on mute councillor Swanson?
Do we have any idea of A, how many townhouse units would happen on both of these sites? And B, whether they would be owner or rented? And C, what the rents or the price would be?
Thank you for your question. I'm going to keep it to just 515 West Sixtieth Avenue because we should keep the questions separate for both proposals, because we will go through the other townhouse after. So 515 West Sixtieth Avenue, the applicant has indicated that they're looking to fit roughly five or six units on the site. And I would not know the exact price point they're planning for the price of those units, but the applicant could choose either rental or strata. They have that option under the Canby Corridor Plan. And the applicant is on the line if you wish to speak to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you councillor Swanson.
Can I speak to the applicant?
Yeah, I think I got, again, that we had a little trouble with the script here today, so I probably should have asked for the applicant if they wanted to say anything before I went to questions, so I apologize for that council. And so if the applicant teams here, did you want to say anything before answering questions from council?
My name is Matthew Chan, I'm the architect and I'm the applicant. And I would like, I wouldn't willing to answer any questions.
Great, thanks. So councillor Swanson, you can ask the applicant, I'm sorry, I'm a little rusty here with these for some reason. I've done so many of them, I don't know why I'm rusty tonight, but anyway, you have three and a half minutes and you can ask questions to the applicant at this stage. And this is the only, the only part of the process that you can ask the applicant direct questions.
Yeah, and I just will preface this by saying I could barely hear the applicant.
Right, thanks. So maybe the applicant can speak closer to the microphone, please.
So, first question is, are you planning to get any government financing for this? Then how much do you, then are you planning to rent or sell the units? And how much are you planning to rent or sell them for ballpark?
I'm the architect, so I, my client is not here, so I don't know if, I don't know the price point they are trying to sell the unit. But they are, I think they are, they might be living in, because the owner may live in some of the units and because of there are some children or whatever, it's good to have the parents in one unit and know their children in other units, right? So I think this is their planning right now. And there will be a smaller unit because as the planner said, there could be five to six units. And five of them are pretty decent size, about 1,200 square foot. And one of them is a smaller size, like four to 500 square foot. So the smaller side could be a, like a rental, yeah. You know, like maybe a mortgage helper, you know, for the, for the, for my client.
So basically, we don't know whether they're going to be rental or owner.
I'm pretty sure that five of them, at least they will be owner occupied. And then one of them could be rental.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Swanson. Any other questions to the applicant? Okay, thanks. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I am going to make a, there are no, let's see. Just going to ask for direction from the clerk here, so I don't make any more mistakes. We are dealing with both of these applications separately, but, and there are speakers to the second item. West Forty-Ninth Avenue? How do you think I should proceed?
Mayor, does the clerk just proceed with 515 West Sixtieth? Call for speakers, there are no registered speakers for that item and no speakers on the line, but just to go through the process in regards to calling for speakers for this item. Then, once that's done and the vote's concluded, move on to item four.
Okay, we'll do that then. We'll complete West Sixtieth first and then we'll move on to West Forty-Ninth. So there are no registered speakers for West Sixtieth, but I am going to call the first time for any speakers to this item. 18333538610 code 53483 pound. That's the first call and I will check with the clerks if there's anybody on the line or in the chambers for this item.
No speakers or anyone on the chamber, Mayor.
Okay, great, thanks. We'll go for the second, second call for speakers. The number is on Twitter and on the live stream. Anybody rushed into the council chambers, clerks?
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Third call, council will take, it's 6:57, we will go to 7:02 and come and conclude this item, so we'll see you in five minutes.
No speakers, Mayor.
Right, okay, thank you very much. So right, so we're going to close the speakers list. And as we received no public comments on this item after 5pm, we're going to close the receipt of public comments. Going to ask the applicant, do you have any closing comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Staff, any closing comments?
No closing comments from staff.
Great. Council, any questions to staff? I don't see anybody on the list, so can have somebody move this report?
Councillor Carr.
Thank you councillor Carr, do we have a seconder?
Councillor Bly.
Thank you councillor Bly. And now we're going to, any debate on this item? I'll move us to a main queue. Councillor Swanson, go ahead.
Yeah, I usually have been voting for the townhouses just because I think it's a cheaper form of homeownership, but now we're seeing articles that say that townhouses are costing as much as homes, single-family homes. And in this case, we have a lot with one where the owner could collect revenue from one unit being transformed into a lot where the owner can collect revenue from five or six units. So it's going to be, the land is going to be a lot more valuable. And I don't think anyone will be able to afford it if they're making less than 100 or 150 grand. And it's in the Canby Corridor when, and I have this issue with the Canby Corridor Plan that it's really not including our median income Vancouver residents, especially not median income renters who are making around 50,000 per household per year. So I'm going to vote against this one. We did have a motion passed on how to increase affordability in the Canby Corridor. And my fear is that we'll be passing all these rezonings and have rezoned all the land for upper-income people before we get that report. That's my issue with this.
Okay, thank you councillor Swanson. Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Similar to councillor Swanson, I like the housing typologies. Townhouses are ground-oriented architecture and generally, again, a housing typology that I could support. My concern, and this is something that I've expressed to staff and I will continue to bring up, is the upward inflationary power that our rezoning leads to. And this is, again, when we look at the assessed value, the reason I've asked the assessment questions is that every time we do one of these rezonings, we are inflating the value of that land. BC Assessment will come in on July 1st and reassess that property at highest and best use. And the aggregate impact of all of this rezoning is to increase the value of the land and the air above it. And why is that a problem for us? It's a problem for us because we continue to talk about building affordable housing and making it possible for people to continue living here. And what I see with applications like this is, is just the, the net effect is a widening of the gap between the local economy and global wealth that is largely behind it. So for those reasons, I won't be supporting these, but I wanted to explain very specifically the reason that I would not support them. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hardwick. That's it for debate and now we'll move to the vote. Hey council, that has passed with councillor Swanson and councillor Hardwick in opposition. Thank you, so that finishes that item. I just wanted to ask the clerk, so we're on kind of just a little problem with my script, so it's West Forty-Ninth, then we continue on through that one?
That's correct, Mayor.
Right, okay, and so staff has, so maybe we can start with with the let's just start with the staff comments, I think. Any staff, extra staff comments on this, this application?
Staff have no comments.
Great, thanks. And I'll ask the applicant, would you, anything to say on this project, applicant?
Nothing to say on the application, but I'll be happy to answer any questions after.
I'm just checking with the clerks. I've started in the appropriate place then for this West Forty-Ninth?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, great.
They've already made their presentation.
That's what I thought. Okay, so, but we but we should ask for questions now from council, first staff for the applicant.
Correct.
Okay, councillor Swanson, up to five minutes, staff or the applicant, you can ask.
Yeah, for the applicant.
Okay.
First question, are you planning on getting any financing from either level of government, province or federal?
Hi councillor Swanson, I am with Farmworks Architecture and I don't believe the client is looking for financing from the federal government for this.
Okay, thanks. Do you know if the units are going to be owned or rented?
They will all be owned.
And do you know what price they'll be?
I don't know the price, but we are doing 17 units, 16 of which will be three-story family-oriented homes with an area of about 1,200 square feet.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Okay, thanks. That's it for the questions. Let's see here, so there are, there are a couple of members of the public that wanted to speak to this item. And I'm looking at, let's see, make sure I've got this right. Aftab Singh Jandir.
Mayor, the speaker on the phone is not on the line. We just have the speaker in person, number two.
Sorry? Okay, though, okay, so Brendan Washburn. Speaker number two, Brendan Washburn.
Is this working? Okay, cool.
Yeah, please go ahead up to five minutes.
I, I wrote down some notes, but I figured I would just speak from the heart. I, I really oppose putting townhouses in this particular spot because it's right beside an elementary school. And construction sites, they're often noisy. And construction sites, they're often noisy places, like they're like some of the noisiest places in the world. Like I used to work construction and I actually ended up getting in trouble for being on my phone too much. Sucked. So what I did instead was I left work for two hours. And I came back at the end of lunch. And when I came back, nobody even noticed. Sorry, I'm like, really passionate about this.
Okay, please take your time.
I don't, I don't think this is a good place for townhouses. I think that there is a plethora of townhouses in Vancouver. I think a more responsible use of this space would be either an Amazon store, like warehouse realistically, because Amazon is taking over everything, and I think that like the future of shopping will strictly be done on Amazon. Like Amazon makes shopping a cakewalk, which, not a literal cakewalk, because literal cakewalks do not exist. But I've spent my entire life looking for a cakewalk. So I can tell you that they're the hardest thing probably possible to find.
Okay, so you're thinking it should be commercial rather than, uh, than townhouses?
Yeah, I don't, I, I think townhouses would be kind of like an irresponsible use of the space. As I, I do a fair bit of walking, so I have completely stopped walking by the Oak Ridge Mall, which is super close to this place, because it's just, it's a zoo there. And I can't, like, it doesn't seem like, I don't know anything about, I know a little bit about construction, I don't know everything about construction, but I feel like it's gonna be a long time until that's a walkable route again. I think another potential, uh, use for the space would be to put in a drone obstacle course. Because I think that in the future, no one will have phones, we'll just have drones, and if we do not know how to use these, then it's pretty irresponsible for us to have them realistically. Like, no one, no one teaches you how to use a phone. So the fact that everyone will have a drone is ridiculous. Like, we need to start actually taking this seriously because the future is happening very quickly. Also, I think, I think another potential use for the space would be to put a giant pool. Because I think that in the future, with global warming the way it is, and people not taking it seriously, I think pretty soon we won't even be able to go inside or outside. We'll always need to be in a body of water. So if we use this space for a giant pool, I think we could set up workspaces. I think it would be a more responsible use than just housing.
Okay, is there any, anything else you'd like to add about, uh, this space?
Hmm. I think that, I think that pretty much covers my notes.
Okay, well, thank you so much for your input today. Um, there are no questions from counsel for you, so I'll just, uh, thank you for your time, and we'll, uh, move on to calling for other speakers.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you for participating. Um, clerks, is that, that is the end of our registered list, so I am going to now call, um, for, uh, uh, other speakers. Uh, the number is one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero code five three four eight three pound. Uh, and I'm just checking with clerks on this first call for speakers. Is there anybody else on this item?
No speakers, Mayor.
Okay, second call, uh, same number, same code, it's on Twitter, it's on live stream. Anybody in chambers or, uh, on the line?
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Right, so we're going to the third call, uh, counsel. It is seven fifteen by my clock, so we'll come back at seven twenty, uh, for the third and final call for speakers. See you in five minutes.
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Uh, so we're gonna close the, uh, speakers list and according to my handy script day, it says that, uh, as we've had no or few public comments after 5:00 PM, we're gonna close the receipt of public comments. And I'm gonna move to the applicant and ask if there's any closing comments on this item.
No closing comments, thank you.
Any closing comments from staff?
Uh, no closing comments from staff.
Counsel, any questions for staff? I don't see any on the queue, so can we have someone move the, uh, report?
So move.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Domonata. Do we have a second or?
Second, Counselor Carr.
I heard Counselor Carr, I think. And we'll go, uh, is there any debate on this item? Counselor Hardwick, go ahead up to five minutes.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate, um, uh, my comments, uh, with the last townhouse application. In similar fashion, I, I, I do like the housing typology, the ground-oriented architecture, and that approach, I think, is, is desirable. My concern is about the ongoing policies, uh, that are leading and continuing, uh, precipitous um, land inflation and the impact, uh, on affordability. And as long as we keep doing the same thing over and over again, uh, I think we all know, uh, what that's the definition, definition of. It's important that we take a step back and really contemplate what we're doing with, uh, the volume of rezonings that we're, we have been approving and the impact on affordability in the city. Because if we're doing, if, if our actions are actually having the, the opposite uh, outcome of what our intentions are, we really do need to have a rethink. And, uh, for that reason, I, I wanted to draw attention to, uh, this and similar applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Carr.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Um, I, I really wanted to address, uh, the issue that's being raised by fellow counselors around, um, uh, land values and the price of housing and concerns that, you know, I share in general around Vancouver, and who wouldn't? I mean, we are a very, very inexpensive city. Um, but, uh, the reason why I'm supporting this is because, um, uh, you know, the, the price of land and the escalation in the value of land, it has already happened in the Canby corridor, and, and it happened like over the period two thousand eight, two thousand nine to two thousand eighteen or so, when there was a real boom in condo development. Um, lots, single-family lots in this area were selling for as much in one lot as eleven million dollars for one single-family home lot. Um, so the price of land has already escalated in this corridor. So either we wanna support some more affordable level of housing development there, or we just say it's an area for the ultra-rich, um, that are in the multi-multi-millions of dollars, single-family homes. Um, we've already zoned it for a multifamily. There has been a lot of talk around this council table and at large around, um, the desire for family homes, um, that, uh, that are, um, not condos. Um, and townhomes, as Counselor Hardwick put it, um, uh, you know, a, a nice typology, um, has been talked about very positively by people throughout Vancouver. Um, so, you know, I just was looking as, as we were, um, debating or, or, uh, there were staff presentations on this. Um, some of the prices for townhomes, I mean, as opposed to the two to three to four million dollar single-family homes, townhomes, you know, in Falls Creek, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, Marple, these are two and three bedrooms, Marple, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, South Est Marine, seven hundred and twenty-nine. These are thousand, these are, these are large numbers, but they are not the same as single-family homes. So I believe, even though it is, um, a very high amount, at least it's providing some other option for people who do wanna get into, uh, the ownership of their own home.
Thank you, Counselor Carr. Uh, Counselor Swanson?
Yeah, um, just to respond to what Counselor Carr said, I don't think it's a matter of do we zone for the rich or the ultra-rich. I think it's a matter of do we require affordability as a condition of increased density? And that's where I'd like to see us go with the report back on how to improve affordability in the Canby corridor and throughout the whole city. Because if we start requiring affordability, land prices will come down. And that's where I think we need to go rather than relying on this market method, which is never going to build housing for people who earn less than about eighty K. That's it for me.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Counselor Curbia? Uh, just turn your mic on there, Counselor Curbia, okay?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, I think if we vote against all of these, because we don't have the, you know, the desired and sort of penultimate level of affordability, we constrain options for people. And I do think that the typology has been mentioned, it's ground-oriented, and I think it's gentle density and something that we actually wanna see a lot more of the city and have a an opportunity to transform our single-family neighborhoods in a way that still has, I, I think, a human scale and a human fabric, and I'd like to see more townhouses, quadplexes, inspirations, such as from brownstones, from, you know, other sort of urban cities and environments, um, that certainly do provide choices. I know very few people um, of an age starting out today or, um, even starting later, uh, because it's so expensive in Vancouver that can afford to buy a single-family house. So we can leave them a single-family houses and nobody can afford to go into them unless they've been in them for a long time, for a number of years. Um, they inherit them, um, or they are fairly fortunate, and, and that's becoming a smaller and smaller number of people, um, in the city here. And, you know, I actually live in the Canby corridor, and I can assure you I would not be there. Um, if, um, I only had single-family housing options, and I would also note too that I think it's been positive that some of these, um, townhome developments that councils approved recently have not all been ownership, some of them have been rental, and so we're starting to see some diversification there. Um, in response to it, I also think it's important to note that a lot of what we approve typically, um, when we're looking at denser or taller buildings, tend to be smaller units and don't really cater to families, and that's a real missing gap in the city as well. And so it's something like twelve hundred square feet. Um, it's a feasible option for people that have kids or multi-generational, if they have a parent living with them or, or what the case is. And so I think we have to, you know, be cognizant of that as well in terms of being able to sort of keep families together and give families options to stay in the city, um, that don't necessarily just wanna live in a high-rise, or it's quite simply that, you know, the studio one and two-bedroom units are, are, are not meeting their needs and are not sufficient. So, um, for that reason, I do think it's a, an important part of our housing mix and complement, and, and I, I think that to sort of leave it as is and say, well, you know, it's, we, we don't like the price point. A lot of people don't, but it is part of the option. It does fit for some folks. Um, and the single-family home is just out of reach. Um, I, I know very few people today starting out or even mid-level that are gonna be able to afford a single-family home in Vancouver. I think that for so many, that ship has sailed, so I, I think it's so important that we provide options, and I think gentle density is a really positive compliment to, um, start really leveraging a lot of our land base, so I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hardwick, you have about three and a half minutes left.
Yeah, since I have some more time, I'm gonna elaborate a little bit more on, on, uh, the urban land economics of this. Um, yes, we all agree that gentle density is a desirable form of housing typology. That's not what is, uh, uh, being discussed here. And as Counselor Carr pointed out, there was enormous land inflation that happened over the last decade as the upward pressure has happened, uh, on the Canby corridor and, and throughout the city. And that's why when we saw, uh, the chart that, uh, BC Assessment showed us at the top of the year, we saw that the land and the air above it within our borders more than doubled in a nine-year period, two-point-five X, that's exponential land inflation. And that has occurred because we've, for all intents and purposes, been selling zoning. And we can continue to, to do that, but a rising tide lifts all boats. One of the reasons that I've been pointing to the importance of understanding what our, our current zoned capacity is is because we have done so much zoning, it, that there is, um, a, you know, a tremendous amount of existing zone capacity yet to be built into. So what I'd like to see us doing, and this is why I continue to push for, for, um, more, um, detail on the data in a variety of forms, but especially around zone capacity, is so that we can look at what we can build without further inflating the land values throughout zoning. So I, I wanna be clear, um, on the rationale behind my thinking here. I'm not being, um, dismissive of the housing typologies or the desires for people to be getting in, into, uh, you know, th- this kind of housing. But the problem is that we, as we continue doing the same thing over and over again, it's just going to continue to inflate the land values because a rising tide does lift all boats. And what I would encourage us to be doing, and this is something that I've been talking to staff about, is really getting a handle on what exists that we could be filling into without continuing to inflate land values. So, um, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more on that before I left the subject, because it is complex and, um, because it is complex and, um, you know, I think we have to get the root to the root cause of our inflation and our affordability. And that's why I keep coming back to the subject. So thank you for bearing, hearing me out.
Thank you. Uh, that's it for, uh, the speaking queue, so we can move to a vote on item four. And councillor Kirby Young, there we go. Okay, everybody's voted and councillor Hardwick and Swanson are opposed. That passes. Thanks, counsel. Moving on to item five. Item five is, uh, uh, CD one rezoning at, uh, four-four-two-six to four-four-six-four Knight Street and fourteen oh-six East Twenty-Eighth Avenue. And, uh, just going to ask first if anybody has a conflict on us. I don't hear anybody, so we'll go ahead with the clerk to read the application.
There is an application by JBL Architects to rezone forty-four-twenty-six to forty-four-sixty-four Knight Street and fourteen oh-six East Twenty-Eighth Avenue from RS one district to CD one district to permit the development of a six-story residential building with seventy-two secured man, uh, market rental housing units. Including ten, uh, lift work units, a height of twenty meters and a floor space ratio of three-point-one are proposed. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. The following correspondence has been received since we refer to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receive public comments. Fifty-three pieces of correspondence and support, one piece of correspondence in opposition, and two pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the, uh, uh, application. This represents all correspondence received up to five P M today.
Thank you so much. Um, this is, um, we're yes, we have quite a lot of speakers on, uh, set to speak on this building, uh, council, so just let you know that. Anybody who wants to get involved, it's one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero code five-three-four-eight-three pound. And we have, uh, Jim Spillane from the rezoning center, uh, to walk us through this, um, this project.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd just like to confirm that you can see the slides on the screen.
Yep, and I'll just check the public screen to make sure we can see it there as well. Just going to double-check first. Yeah, yeah, it's on the public screen too.
Thank you. Uh, this is a rezoning application which proposes to rezone four-four-two-six, the four-four-six-four Knight Street and one-four-oh-six East Twenty-Eighth under the Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy. The site shown in red is made up of four blocks at the southeast of Knight Street and east Twenty-Eighth. The lots are zoned RS one and are currently developed with four houses. Sites to the north are townha- townha- townhouses zoned RM one N, while sites to the south, east and west are all zoned RS one. This shows an aerial view of the site facing north. The site is approximately one thousand five hundred square meters in size and the width of Knight Street in this location is approximately twenty-four meters. This area of Knight Street has a range of local amenities, shops and, and services. It includes bus route number twenty-two between South Vancouver and downtown, as well as a range of local bike routes. There are five elementary schools located within a kilometer of the site. The Vancouver School Board indicates that enrollment vacancies, um, exist at three of these schools. There are two group childcares and five local parks located within eight hundred meters of the site. This rezoning application is being assessed under the Affordable Housing Choices interim rezoning policy, which was approved in two thousand and twelve. In November two thousand and nineteen, council approved the secured rental policy which consolidates opportunities for rezoning contained in the A H C and the, the Rental One Hundred policy. While the A H C was close to new rezoning inquiries after June two thousand and nineteen, applications received after this date can continue to be assessed. The inquiry for this rezoning, uh, uh, um, the, the application was received in March two thousand and nineteen and therefore can still be assessed. The intent of the A H C is to enable real examples of more affordable ha- housing type. Rezoning applications under the policy must meet a number of criteria, including compliance with location requirement. The policy allows for a maximum of two proposals within ten blocks along an arterial. At this time, there are no other A H C rezoning applications within ten blocks along Knight Street. The formal rezoning application was sub- submitted on June tenth, twenty twenty. It proposes to rezone the site from RS one to CD one to permit the development of a six-story building with seventy-two secured market rental u- units, including ten live-work units. The application proposes a height of twenty meters and an F S R of three-point-one. As part of Restart Smart Vancouver, in response to the pandemic, this project will create approximately two hundred and fifty-two new onsite and offsite jobs during the recovery phase. Shown here is an alternate view of the proposal from East Twenty-Eighth, facing Southwest. It shows how the upper floors have been set back from the rear to reduce the impact on homes to the east. While lan- while landscaping and outdoor spaces seek to create a more active edge along the laneway. The applicant will not seek the D C L waiver for this application. However, this slide has been included to show the average market rents for newer buildings on the east side in the book, the, um, I mean, the blue column and the relative affordability of renting when compared to the cost of homeownership shown on the right-hand side in the red column. Under the Community Amenity Contributions Policy for Rezonings, secured market rental applications within the RS zones proposing more than five floors are required to include a financial statement. This is to assess the value of the project and to determine if land lift has been created. The pro forma for this site has been reviewed by staff who concluded that there is a land lift as a result of this application. Since the applicant will be paying the D, D C Ls and due to the small scale of this proposal, the land lift is not sufficient to support the inclusion of below-market units within the project. Instead, the applicant is paying a cash C A C of two hundred and forty thousand, which will be allocated to local childcare projects. A pre-application open house was held in October two thousand and nineteen and was attended by thirty-five people. Following submission of the rate, rate of the rezoning application, a virtual open house was held during September twenty twenty. During the three-week open house, there were three hundred and fifty-five views of the page. In total, we received one hundred and nine pieces of feedback. Key themes of support included the provision of secured rental and live-work units, while key themes of concern included the provision of car parking, the building height and the location of the site on our ti- uh, serial road. In reviewing the application, staff have determined that the proposed car parking, the height and the location are an appropriate response for this site. In summary, staff recommend a pr- um, approval of this application to re- rezone the site from RS one to C, CD one subject to the requirements outlined in appendix B of the report, as it meets the intent of the A H C policy. If approved, the application would provide seventy-two new secured market rental units and a cash C A C of two hundred and forty thousand. Thank you. Staff and the applicant team are available to take your, to take your questions.
Thank you so much. Um, uh, and, uh, do we have the applicant team here? Checking if the applicant team is here.
Um, hi, yeah, this is, uh, Daniel Eisenberg there from G B L Architects. Uh, the applicant team is here. Uh, we will waive the presentation, but we're here for questions.
Great, okay, thank you so much. Uh, so now it's the time for, uh, councillors to ask questions to staff or the applicant. And I've got councillor Swanson on for five minutes, so please go ahead.
Thank you. Will this, to the applicant, will this be a pet-friendly building?
Hi, uh, councillor Swanson, this will be a pet-friendly building.
Yes. Are you planning to get senior government financing?
Uh, we, the short answer is no, uh, but we have, uh, had discussions with B C Housing, uh, to possibly look at some of their programs that, that may be a fit for this project.
Well, if you did get B C Housing funding, would you add any element of affordability to it? It looks to me like you have to have a sixty-two K to get a studio here if it's at market rent.
Um, we just started exploring, um, kind of all the B C housing options. Um, but the option that, that it looks like we, um, are most likely to do, uh, does not require um, any sort of extensive, uh, uh, affordability, uh, element.
Okay, so you may get government financing, but wouldn't provide any extra affordability. So there was a study that just came out that showed that pollution from traffic is linked to increased cases of dementia, M S, Alzheimer's and Parkinson's and various lung conditions. And we all know that the Knight Clark corridor is basically the worst in Canada for pollutants, especially from tires and brakes. So what have you done with the architecture of this building to protect your future tenants from these health issues?
Uh, councillor, uh, this is a great question. Uh, at the moment, there is, uh, there is enough, no, no policy in place to address this, um, although uh, proper ventilation, uh, the ne- new systems and, and, in, uh, based on, on new, uh, the new mechanical systems usually, uh, uh, provide better ventilation so people can keep their windows closed and mechanical ventilation will help, uh, provide ventilation without so, so much, uh, air pollution. But that's as far as it goes.
Okay, thanks. Can I ask staff if there is any requirement? A couple of years ago, uh, we, this council passed a motion asking staff to look at ways that housing on arterials could actually prevent people from or could mitigate some of the harm done by pollution? And I'm just wondering if anything has happened to that and if there are any pollution mitigation measures planned or required in this building?
Thanks for the question. Um, so we can't speak to that right now. It's, um, the B B L, uh, um, would need to update the building code. Um, and so we're not able to update the policy at this stage.
Okay, so there's nothing there to protect these folks from any of the pollution on the worst polluting traffic corridor in Canada?
Uh, yes, that's right. So at this time, there's no consideration for that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Dejana, up to five minutes.
Thanks so much. I, I did have a question and it's a question for staff, actually. And it's, um, it, it's unusual for me to, at, at least it's unusual, to see a C A C um, in lieu of a, a D C, D C L. So I, I'm trying to understand and I had thought that before we sort of, either a D C L waiver or the amenity or contribution that we calculate often when it comes to increasing rental is the rental housing. So is this something new that we will be seeing? Sort of will this, uh, be a direction that this is moving in? Or is this sort of a one-time or a very unusual situation where we would see a C A C on rental housing instead of, uh, condo?
Thanks for the question. So yes, we don't, um, yes, so we don't often see this on a rental site. Um, but under the Community Amenity Contributions Policy for Rezonings, um, secured market, uh, applications within the art, the, the RS zones proposing more than five floors are required to include a financial, um, statement. And so this is to assess the value of the project and to determine if, if a land lift has been created. Um, and so after assessing the proposal and after, um, assessing the financial statement, staff found that there was a land lift on the site, um, which has led to a C A C payment of two hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, so will this, um, will this set, uh, a precedent in the, in the neighborhood or in any of the City of Vancouver policies to see C A Cs on rental?
No, so it's unlikely, um, because this project is within the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the RS zone, whereas most of these sites are located in a C one or a C two zone. Um, so those sites wouldn't apply under the Community Amenity Contribution Policies.
Now, another question is because they, um, the applicant, and this is a question for staff, but because the applicant is not asking for a D C L waiver and is paying a C A C on rental, they could convert this eventually if they wanted to. Is that correct?
To, to, to convert it to what? Sorry, to?
Convert the rental to condo. There's nothing stating that they can't. I mean, they'd have to come back and, 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 uh, you know, go through the appropriate process. But the D C L waiver usually that we would see on some of the affordable or market rentals, um, has to be paid back. And that's sort of the consequence or penalty if, uh, if the, the owner of the rental in the end decides to convert it back to strata condo. So I'm just wondering, could this be converted to condo in the long run?
So no, so, yeah, so in the report, um, in, um, um, appendix B of the report, there's a housing agreement which prohibits the stratification of the building. So it has to be retained as secured market rental for the life of the building.
Okay, so, I mean, that's comforting to me, but can't we just do that? Why don't we do that for everyone instead of offering a waiver in lieu?
Um, so that is for every secured rental project, it is, um, the requirement that they, that, that they enter into a housing agreement.
Oh, I understand that. I'm just wondering about the rent, the waiver, because the waiver is usually tied to the affordability. So in this case, there's not a waiver and I understand the D C L would be more. So it's technically a waiver, but they're still paying a C A C. Is that correct?
And so they've chosen not to take the waiver and they'll be paying the J C L and they're, they're, they're also paying the C A C.
Okay, so, um, can I ask a question to the applicant quickly? And that is, um, may I ask, uh, you don't have to answer, but why, why did you choose not to apply for the waiver?
Applicant team? Uh, hi, uh, councillor Dejana Nova, thank you for the question. Um, we, we actually look long and hard at this. Um, and, and while, you know, the D C L waiver, um, i- i- is a really great resource for a lot of developers, um, to encourage developers to do rental building. Um, i- i- it doesn't work for us i- for internal purposes, um, and therefore we've elected, uh, not to go down this route.
Okay, that's my time. Thank you very much for answering all my questions.
Thanks. That's it for, uh, questions from council to staff and the applicant. And now we're going to go, uh, here from the public. Uh, so I've just pulling up my list here. One second, counsel. Okey-dokey. So the first person I have on the list is, uh, Franco Eng, speaker number one. Franco Eng for the CD one rezoning in four, four-two-six Knight Street.
Hello?
Hi there. Uh, thanks for calling in. You have, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Sure, awesome. Uh, thank you, city council. Uh, and good evening, everyone. My name is Franco. Uh, I'm a twenty-six-year-old. I'm a young professional college grad. I am a educational consultant in my professional job and I also have a, uh, nonprofit that works with, um, about twenty different uh, high schools in, in that works with about twenty different high schools in Metro Vancouver. So in my professional life and in my passion project, I work with, you know, students ages from high school all the way to fresh college grads. And I think what I want to express is the frustration that we are all experiencing as young professionals with really the unaffordability of Vancouver. And I think that not only are, you know, students and young professionals my age struggling to even envision homeownership, we're now struggling to even think about moving out of our own houses and starting our own independent lives without having to move into a basement suite with three or four roommates each paying, friends paying a thousand dollars each for a room in a, in a basement in Vancouver. And I just wanted to call in to advocate for this project is because I think it's so needed that we have just seventy two extra units available for, you know, young professionals who are just trying to get their foot in the door. You know, this project has studio spaces, it has one bedrooms, you know, and we can't barely even afford that, but it's a start. And I think that, you know, all of us and all the students that I speak with look forward to having a life in Vancouver, but unfortunately, many of us have chosen now to move out to Surrey and even further away. And I don't want to see that for myself and my peers, but unfortunately, that is the case. And I think that, you know, City Council has to be aware of the fact that every listing that I personally have gone to, as I am trying to move out of my place now is have twenty other, thirty other bidders there viewing the place and all fighting for it. And I think it's completely ridiculous that we're unable to build more housing. And with this project being close to the Arturo Street in a vibrant neighborhood with schools around, I think this is an area that I would personally be interested in at least getting my foot in the door and hopefully building my family and my career down the road. So that's my thought and I sincerely hope that City Council can really consider pushing through, not only with this project, but other market rental projects down the line, because I think we just need more and more supply. And if we don't have it, then, you know, our young professionals and even myself would really seriously be considered moving to another city.
Thanks so much for your time. You don't have any questions from councils, so I am going to move on to the next speaker. But again, thank you for calling in today. Counsel, the next speaker on the list is Chelsea Smith, speaker number two, Chelsea, Chelsea Smith.
Mayor, speaker two is not on the line.
Thanks very much, clerks. I'll move to speaker number three, Michaela Buskle. Speaker number three, Michaela Buskle.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Sure can. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Amazing. Good evening, everybody. My name is Michaela Buskle. I'm a resident of Vancouver. And I do support this proposal also. I've lived in Vancouver for the last twelve years and I bought my small apartment in Mount Pleasant just over six years ago. At that time, there was still shockingly quote unquote, good deals to be found in Vancouver. But if I had made this, the decision to buy even one year later, it would have been completely unattainable for me. I'm so incredibly fortunate to have my condo and I am so incredibly dismayed at the availability of affordable housing for my fellow Vancouverites. The past nineteen months have been enormously stressful for everyone. Myself and many of my friends lost our jobs due to the pandemic. Many of us have had to branch out into entirely new industries as our previous careers are obsolete. And we are now earning much less than we were previously. I'm lucky as my mortgage is lower than what an equivalent rental property goes for in our city. Even with my lower housing costs, it's been a struggle and a source of ongoing anxiety trying to stay on top of things as I navigate a brand new career. Many of my friends and peers have not been so lucky. Some of them have had to move to more affordable dwellings only to find out that they can only afford dark dingy basement suites and old poorly maintained apartments. Others have been forced to move in with roommates, back at home with their parents, which is embarrassing A F when you're like forty. Or move away from their communities entirely. Of those who've been able to stay in their homes, many are only able to do so because they've been living there for years and are locked into an affordable rent. But those individuals are often faced with the dilemma of whether to ask their landlord for upkeep and repairs because they don't want to risk being rent evicted. These factors are all terrible for mental health, especially at a time that we are all feeling the pressure of the pandemic. The many residents of this city who cannot afford to buy homes need and deserve secure affordable rental housing. They deserve to live somewhere that's accessible to transit. They deserve to live somewhere that allows pets. And they deserve to not be forced into financially and physically uncomfortable living situations just to make it by. This rental proposal has my full support. Though these rental units may not be affordable to everybody, those who can afford them will open up rental opportunities for others by upgrading from their current home. This is one small step in the much greater climb that Vancouver faces with its housing dilemma. But for seventy two individuals and families, it will be a step towards a happier future. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time today and hang in there. Really appreciate you sharing this story. Thanks.
Thanks, guys. Bye.
Thank you. Counselor, on next, the speaker number four, Christina Chan.
Mayor, speaker four is not on the line.
Okay, thanks. We're going to go to speaker five, Adrian Herbert. Adrian Herbert, speaker number five.
Mayor, speaker five is also not on the line.
Okay, thanks. We're going to go to speaker six, Lester Liu.
Hello?
Hi there. Thanks for calling in. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hi, everybody. So my name is Lester. I grew up, I was born and grew up in Vancouver. I started working when I was fourteen, worked all my life throughout my schooling, all the way past university. And after university, I got a well-paying job doing tech, technology sales. And even, even with my technology sales job, I'm unable to afford any, any type of housing in Vancouver at this moment. I have tried looking at renting, had tried looking at splitting rent with friends and other roommates. Unfortunately, the cost of what our rental market is right now in Vancouver is unaffordable for me to be able to save money, to be able to purchase a single family house in the near future and be able to rent at the same time. Which is why now it's restricted me to keeping, staying with my family, living at home, right? And being dependent to my family. And ideally, as a young adult, I want to be independent from my family and be able to become a full grown adult and have my own place and my own privacy. But unfortunately, because of many other advocates in the city that are opposing housing, housing and development like these that's providing us more affordable rentals and lowering the cost of housing, because they want to keep their health values up so they're able to keep their net worth or their pay per net worth under their real estate. So I am supporting this development a hundred percent because we definitely need more of these type of developments happening in our city and moving forward on too. That's all.
Thank you so much for your time today. Counselor Swanson has a question for you. Counselor Swanson, please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for coming in to speak. I'm just wondering what your definition of affordable is.
So from, from right now, what, if I'm wanting to rent a single, like a studio apartment or studio unit, it will cost me at least one, one thousand and up per month, right? So if we're able to get anything close to that or lower, that will be considered affordable for me.
So this development. With this development, the cheapest unit is probably going to be about fifteen or sixteen hundred. And that would be for a studio, probably around three hundred and twenty square feet.
Yeah, that is true, but there's also other units where there's multiple rooms. Like I, I looked at the design, there was three units and two, two other units. Those units I can easily split with other roommates where it will make it less of a burden for myself. And because even if, even if I'm not able to afford this current development, this current development will be a stepping stone for our city to start lowering down our housing costs. That would create future developments that would be more affordable to the general public.
How do you, how do you figure that this development will create future developments that will be more affordable? I don't get that.
Because it will, because it will increase supply of housing within the city. And when we have more supply within the city, the housing, housing price will go down. Because right now, the biggest issue I see with Vancouver.
Price is going up.
Well, the thing is, our, our supply is not meeting the amount of demand that's actually coming into the city. If we, if we actually build more developments and higher density developments, not just townhouses or single family houses, right, more high density development, we are able to actually make more, enough supply for our market pricing to actually come down.
Okay.
And, and anything, and any type of development that, that's more affordable than three hundred thousand dollars for a down payment would be considered affordable, like a good step in the right direction.
Okay, it's affordable even if you don't have to have sixty two thousand dollars income to rent it?
Yeah, so right now I make more than sixty two thousand in, in income. But because of what my goals are in life, I'm unable to actually afford the, the price of rental right now.
Okay, well, I wish you good luck in finding something.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor DeGenova also has questions for you. Counselor DeGenova, please go ahead.
Thanks so much. Just a follow up question. Are you concerned that if the city doesn't keep up with the supply? I mean, we're already not meeting the demand. I think you've well made that point. That this will become less affordable and more out of reach for you and, and those you know in similar situations?
One hundred and ten percent.
So that would be why you're advocating for it? Because I think another counselor had just asked you about the rationale for that. Is, is, it's not just about this project for you, but this project is a part of it? Is that what I'm hearing?
That, that is correct. This, this project is more, it could be a stepping stone into helping us get more projects like these going on in the city. So we're able to actually lower the housing costs and actually feel have young adults afford housing within Vancouver.
Thank you so much. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Thanks for calling in. That's it for questions from council. So again, I appreciate your participation this evening and we're going to move on to the next speaker.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Speaker number seven is Ryan Pack. Ryan Pack?
Hello?
Hi there. You have up to five minutes to speak to council. Whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, first off, I'd like to appreciate everyone for spending their evening going through all of this. It's, it's great to see that the city is putting an effort towards affordable housing. I myself, I am a young professional, twenty six, graduated from U B C, born and raised in Vancouver. And it's been shocking for me to find out that rent is not as affordable as I would like it to be in the city. I actually did used to rent with a roommate of mine in a basement suite, but just, just the living conditions alone, as well as the, the rental costs, it was just unaffordable. So essentially for, for myself and other young professionals out there to have a sense of savings and an emergency fund that afford the daily luxuries that we have in Vancouver that we all enjoy. It just wasn't feasible for, for neither myself or my roommate to be renting in the city. So we both actually had to move back home. And with the, the motion of this project, having affordable housing out there, even if it's a studio at a price, priced at around sixteen hundred, I would find is a lot more appealing, especially if it's a new development compared to what's out there for the similar price range you're looking at. Basement suites, basement studios, illegal suites, the like and so forth. And it's unfortunate, especially as a city as nice as ours, to, to be limited to only those of a certain income and higher, when a lot of the jobs within Vancouver that help run the city just don't keep up to that standard. But yeah, I would like to press my support and for the development. And hopefully the council can provide many more opportunities like this for everyone else as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, so I'll thank you for participating this evening and move on to the next speaker. Counsel, the next speaker signed up to speak is Manbir Singh Sajin, speaker number eight.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity.
Great. Thanks for calling in. Up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay, yes. So my name is Manbir. I'm twenty nine year old professional living in Vancouver South. I've been born and raised here. The reason why I'm calling in to support this project on Knight and Twenty Eighth Avenue is because I'm frustrated by the lack of rental options available in Vancouver. A lot of people I grew up with, a majority of them have already moved out or are highly concerned in moving out to Surrey to start their families. Not only have they given up on the idea of home ownership in Vancouver, but we also have not been able to find any form of affordable rental homes, short or long term. And when there are units available or ads, they get taken right away. So there's a big demand for it. If we can't even pass a rezoning for market rental buildings, I can't imagine us trying to solve this issue of home ownership. I understand this project isn't the solution, but it's still a good start. It's still seventy two units that we need right now and it's market rental regulated. And that's all I have to say. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for calling in. Now, there's no questions for you, so I'll move on to the next speaker. Thanks again. Let's see, council, next speaker is speaker number nine, Candice Valentin.
Hi, good evening.
Hi there. Up to five minutes. Yes, again, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name's Candice. I was born in France and raised in East Vancouver. I grew up with a single mom in this part of town. I currently live just a couple of blocks away from this proposed development. And I wanted to speak tonight because I really echo the sentiment of the other speakers. There's a huge lack of purpose-built rental units, especially in East Vancouver. I actually was one of the young people that moved away from this city in my twenties. I, I left really from the town at twenty two and I just moved back just before COVID. And I lived, I moved away from Vancouver because I wanted to build a career in the arts. I was a writer and now I work in film, which is one of the main reasons I moved back. And, but I, I kind of had to start my career outside of the city because it wasn't sustainable to live here in the arts, especially, you know, there's a lot of unpaid internships, low paid work. And it took me about ten years to earn, you know, develop myself in my career to earn enough of a living to be able to afford this town. I moved back here after living in cities like Montreal and Madrid and Lyon. And I couldn't help but notice in all of these cities, they're full, they're packed with dense neighborhoods, with buildings that are, you know, three to six stories tall, in main arteries with lots of public transit, lots of walking, mixed use buildings. And these are also communities where owning a single family home is extremely rare and a, a complete luxury. I don't know a lot of Europeans who expect to live and own a single family home, but they do have the privilege of being able to live and grow their families in apartments, you know, that are more than one bedroom. And there's a huge lack of, of that in this town. And it has a real impact on young people and also growing families. My husband and I right now live on the top floor of a house, which we rent. I love it. It's great, but I'm super conscious that if we had kids, like I have no idea where we would go. I have friends who've moved all the way to Chilliwack to be able to afford a place to have a family. And I think it's a real, it's a real shame. I really noticed a difference in the livelihood in Vancouver. I mean, obviously I moved back during, just before COVID, so, you know, I recognize part of that is due to other reasons. But, you know, Vancouver is missing the livelihood of cities, even like Montreal, where you have more affordable housing and you can have diverse neighborhoods that are economically diverse, ethnically diverse, demographically diverse, just by nature of the affordability. And I really hear, you know, the thought that goes into, you know, the questions from the council about pollution and all of that. But I just want to flag that I think perfect is the enemy of good. We really need more purpose-built rental units in this community and renters shouldn't feel, you know, at the behest of their landlords when they look for a place to live and, and feel the, the risk of being evicted at any time. So thank you so much and thanks for your time. Um, so thank you so much and, um, thanks for your time.
Thank you for your time, uh, there are no questions from council, but really appreciate you, uh, sharing your story and welcome back to Vancouver. Uh, we're gonna go, uh, on to, uh, Harry Zhang, uh, speaker number ten.
Mayor, Harry is not on the line.
Okay, thank you, we have Anne Roberts, speaker number twelve.
Hi, hi. Hello, Mayor and Council. Hi, um, I, uh, I did write, write a letter, um, I'm also, I'll be brief and, uh, try not to repeat of what was said. I am calling to oppose the rezoning. Um, uh, by the way, I've lived in Kensington Cedar Cottage now for forty years and actually not far from this site, uh, between Knight and Fraser, so very familiar with the area. And what are the forces going on there? There's no question that we need more rental housing. Um, my heart goes out to all the people who talk about the hardship, I have my own kids and family who are kissing many of the same. But, um, uh, I don't think, um, that's not, I'm not opposed to it because it's too tall or because, um, you know, the, the, uh, uh, it might block someone's view or the sun or something, not any of those things. What my concern is that it's located on Knight. Um, I, uh, I'm, I'm saying it's, um, it's, uh, not just that it's an arterial, busy arterial, but it's the worst arterial in the city. Um, as councillor Swanson mentioned, it, uh, the study that came out ago was so shocking about the level of pollution and that, um, it, uh, was particularly dangerous. It was that cocktail of emissions from the tailpipe, from, uh, tires, partic- particulate matter coming from the tires and the brake binding that put together, make it so, uh, dangerous. So, um, uh, it caused the heart, heart disease, asthma, um, you know, um, uh, various respiratory illnesses, developmental problems, dementia, on and on. So this is very, uh, serious, the researchers warned to think about locating whether you could actually vulnerable people, um, uh, there or, you know, where do we locate? Probably in which, uh, there's, there's schools, all of that. So, yeah, the council did pass that most years ago, which I was very heartened about, that there must be some improvements. Um, this is a bit discouraging to find that that wasn't considered at all, um, when considering Knight as one of the arterials where these kind of, uh, projects could be. So, um, I, 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 I think, um, you know, we know that the high housing costs and the low vacancy rates mean, uh, the residents with the lowest incomes, the families with children, seniors, the people who are the most vulnerable are gonna end up along this corridor. And so it, it is a challenge to how can the city, they're, say they're applying an equity lens to the development? How can they say that they're trying to determine that the same standards of health and safety are being applied equally to all residents? If we have a concentration along arterials, which has been a city policy for many, many years, besides the, uh, particular affordable housing programs, basically you end up, you're, uh, using poor people, vulnerable people, people of color, indigenous, community, you're using them as a buffer between the traffic, the pollution and the noise and then the single-family residences. Um, uh, so, um, I know the city is thinking council is, uh, is making these kinds of.
Sorry, uh, we're, we're, uh, we're losing you on the cell phone.
Oh, okay. Is this what you want? Maybe?
Uh, not, not really, we're, 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 uh, you're, you're, you're cracking up, we're breaking up quite a lot.
Oh, um, I'll try to move to, um, the, uh, can you hear now?
Yep.
Maybe I can, I don't know.
Yep, we can, we can hear you a little better now.
Okay, I'll try to speak up, um, but I'll, I'll be fairly then brief. So what, what I'm mostly, um, concerned about is I think actually that the risk is dangerous enough that council should remove Knight Street as a arterial for this program. And then, uh, if council went ahead to approve it, I would urge you to apply conditions that are, uh, serious enough that could deal with the, uh, po- kind of pollution that is there, that would have like the air filtration, air purifiers, that would have the, um, noise things that would, uh, um, you know, compensate in some way. When you look at those live-work, uh, studios, they're facing Knight Street, the worst thing. So people are going to be there twenty-four hours a day.
We are at the five-minute mark, so thanks, but you do have a question from, from councillor Boyle has a question for you. Uh, councillor Boyle, please go ahead.
Yes, uh, thanks, thanks so much, I certainly share your concern about using renters as buffers on these polluted arterials. And so I'm interested to hear as a resident in the neighborhood if the, um, if the project were proposed a block or two in from the arterial, if you would support it, uh, off arterial.
Well, I live, I live a, you know, I live a few blocks, uh, inside from, from these arterial, uh, the arterial and I would support it. I actually think, I've been active in the community a long time, there's an enormous support for density, for more housing, for integrating more, it could be different sizes, you don't necessarily have to have twelve stories, you know, I mean, that's something to be worked out of how to do that. But so far, uh, Kensington Cedar Cottage has embraced that ever, ever since the beginning, really, when city plan went. So, you know, I, I don't know, you know, exact details of how many floors or that to, to try to speak for the community, but I know in the past they've been very open to that kind of density.
Okay, I'll leave it at that, thanks so much.
Thanks, uh, councillor, councillor Swanson?
Yeah, thanks so much for coming, um, I wonder if you could elaborate a little bit on some of the studies that, uh, show the health dangers of the pollution and compare Knight Street with some of the other traffic corridors like the four oh one in Toronto?
Uh, yeah, I think, um, I mean, the, the University of Toronto researchers worked with the Metro Vancouver, the engineers, as well as some other cities, and they looked at, uh, traffic pollution, um, uh, uh, you know, across the country to try to look at different, uh, degrees of danger. And so they found it, even though the four oh one, which is one of the busiest highways, certainly the busiest in Canada and the busiest, you know, one of the busiest in North America, that even though it had so much more traffic than Knight Street, it didn't have anywhere near as much, um, pollution, traffic pollution. And it didn't have the kind of dangerous kind. What, what the situation in, um, uh, Knight Street is the many, many trucks that are going back and forth to the port. And so, as I said, you get that kind, you get the emissions, you get the tire particulate and the researchers warned that it's that combination, that soup, that can spread as much as two hundred and fifty meters on either side of Knight Street. So the schools along there, the people who live along there are now being exposed to a very dangerous level of pollution.
Okay, and could you just remind council of your, um, you're retired now, I understand, but of your previous occupations, including being a city councillor and before that?
Can I sit right with you guys? Of the means, I, I did start out of the city pub, with being chair of the Kensington Cedar Cottage City Plan Committee and, uh, also served, uh, served on the school board, but have been active over the years also up in the park, at Grace Park and things like that. So brought my kids up in the community, went to school there. And, um, uh, I've long, just long been concerned about Knight Street, that if you, um, if you have a situation with all that traffic going back and forth to the port, we need access to the port, but then what has been done for those people who just happened to have been had houses along? It used to be a pretty residential street and, um, you know, we need to look at that.
If I could just interrupt, if I could ju- ju-
Yeah.
Just interrupt for a sec, you're also good at facts, right? You used to teach journalism and write for the Globe and Mail?
Yeah. Yes, I am.
So you're not making this up?
No, I've been doing a lot of research over the years over this and, um, and then went through it over the last few days when I heard that this, uh, you know, when I did find out that, uh, the, um, this project was proposed. As I said, of course we need more rental housing, but not Knight Street. Surely the exception could be made, um, uh, that that not be one of the arterials, not, not the worst polluted place in Canada.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councillor Dominado also has a question?
All right. Thanks, Mayor, hi Anne, nice to hear your voice. Um, I, a quick question for you, because this is not the first time that the subject of, of rentals on arterials has come up, but I, I'm curious about your thoughts around, uh, building housing on arterials in general, because it, it pre-exists, right? We have housing, existing homes on, on most of our arterials. Um, and this has come up on a regular basis, and just your thoughts on that? And what, what should be, what should we be doing differently from your perspective?
Um, well, I think, I think two things, um, that, that there's been a long history and I think it's been politically, uh, it worked, um, for the various councils over the time, that you put people, and mostly these would be renters, mostly it is poor people who would end up in apartments, especially when this began, it was before maybe expensive condos and, you know, penthouses that sold for ten. So you had that and as I said, it, um, became a policy then and they were grudgingly accepted, um, because they were on the arterials and they served as a buffer. Those buildings, uh, deflected, uh, not only the pollution but the noise. Grudgingly accepted and, um, and I, I mean, so it's been a longstanding policy. I think we really have to move and have it much more open, the kind of density we have. But I think also there can be ways to have modest density, there can be ways to have attractive density. And I think it does work, if you look, um, excuse me, if you look at the, uh, neighborhood, um, around, say like Clark Drive, there's a kind of mishmash of three-story, four-story apartment buildings and then single-family homes and then duplexes and, you know, just a whole kind of variety thrown together. That's one of the most desirable neighborhoods in the city, you know, for many people and it certainly is, um, not cheap, it's not like it's, uh, depressed property value. So I think we can look at some of those very exciting options and I think then people would be more, uh, welcoming in all the single-family areas, not, not viewing it as a threat.
Appreciate that, uh, thanks for calling in this evening, Anne.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that, that's it, okay, appreciate your calling in and wait, we're gonna move to the next speaker. Uh, we have Judy Fong, uh, speaker number thirteen. Judy Fong, speaker number thirteen.
Speaker thirteen is not on the line, Mayor.
Thank you, clerks, we have speaker number fourteen, Lacphire Dillon.
Hello?
Hi there, uh, you have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Okay, hello everyone, uh, my name's Lacphire Dillon, I'm twenty-five years old and I work as a land surveyor, uh, living in the Vancouver South area, um, I've lived here pretty much my whole life. I'm calling in to support the project on Knight and, uh, East Twenty-Eighth Avenue, uh, because of the limited rental options available in Vancouver, I think this is a great project. Uh, currently I'm living at home with my parents, cause it's not affordable to rent a place due to the limited supply and high demand of housing. It's, uh, very difficult to compete with, uh, uh, however many number of people apply for the one basement suite and, you know, the price is just crazy. Um, and buying a home or an apartment, it's extremely difficult. Uh, it doesn't look like a reality right now, maybe one day, but with the prices in Vancouver, uh, at all-time high, renting is the only option right now. Um, I recently graduated from school last year. Um, and, uh, you know, friends that I've gone to school with, a lot of them have, uh, moved out of Vancouver, you know, they've moved out to Coquitlam, New West, uh, uh, you know, where it's a little bit more affordable, um, being able to put like down payments on apartments, um, just cause, uh, Vancouver's so unaffordable right now. I believe that, uh, this project is a step in the right direction, building these, uh, seventy-two rentals, um, that are market rent regulated, it will allow for, uh, young people, uh, who are just starting out in their professional careers to have somewhere to live, that would be more affordable than what's available right now. I believe the city needs to think about the younger generation, cause if we continue on the path of only having single-family zoning, it's, uh, it'll be very hard for young individuals and young families to, uh, continue living in the city. Um, thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thanks so much, uh, councillor Kurbeyang has a question for you.
Okay.
Go ahead councillor Kurbeyang.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, um, yeah, thanks for being here to speak tonight, I have just one question for you and I'm curious, cause it's great when we have different voices coming forward at council, um, to speak. How did you, uh, hear about the project or how did you get involved with speaking?
Uh, hea- heard about it, uh, through a friend of mine, um, heard about the project through him.
Okay, I was curious, cause we're hearing quite a number of sort of speakers similar to yourself, younger, starting out, they experience a shortage of housing, so I was just wondering if that was word of mouth or if you heard some outreach or participated in a session or just?
It's a word of mouth, uh, uh, you know, it's difficult to find a place, you know, just talking to different people, you meet people, uh, going through the same thing, so just met them through a friend.
Okay, and can I ask, do you live in this area now and it's a neighborhood you like to stay in? Do you live in a different part of Vancouver? Like, what?
Uh, yeah, I live in Va- Vancouver South, uh, grew up in Vancouver, uh, it's not too far from where I currently live, I currently live in the, about approximately the Clarny area.
Okay, so you're, in, in terms of, uh, options, you're looking for them in, in sort of different, across different neighborhoods?
Yeah, oh yeah, um, it's mostly single-family housing from where I am right now. Somewhere in Vancouver would be nice to live.
Okay, thank you, thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, that's it for questions, appreciate you, uh, phoning in this evening and sharing your views. I will, uh, move on to the next speaker now, uh, we have, uh, Lillian Cho, speaker number fifteen, Lillian Cho.
Hi there, can you guys hear me?
Sure can, uh, up to five minutes, please.
Great, um, so, good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Lillian Cho. I've been employed with the provincial government for the last eleven years. Um, I'm born in B C and a long-time Vancouver resident. Um, and I just wanna take the time and speak out today, cause I understand the importance of having adequate and affordable rental housing to support a glowing, growing population. My understanding is this project, Knight Street, will bring a brand-new apartment building with seventy, seventy-two new rental units to offer my community. And I think this is a great idea to have higher-density housing in these low dens- density residential areas. Um, I find that single detached homes create a supply problem, which drive up rent prices for middle-class families like myself, who are some of the most least able to afford it. Um, I think the rental project proposed would provide much-needed housing options and I also appreciate the fact that this location has decent transportation options with buses, bike routes and walking distance to many public amenities. It's the neighborhood that I live in and I have great appreciation for it. And personally, I've had many people in my life, family and friends, that have moved out of Vancouver due to limited supply. It's just, it's been especially difficult during the last year and a half, during the pandemic, being away so far from my network of support. I love my home Vancouver, but I also feel a piece of home is missing. My home is, my hope is to have increased in rental properties that my friends and family can move back into. So just in conclusion, I'm in support of the rezoning application, I thank everyone for your time this evening.
Thanks so much for your time tonight, uh, there are no questions for you, but, uh, thank you for phoning in. Uh, let's see, council, we're moving on to, uh, Sharon Lynn, speaker number sixteen, Sharon Lynn.
Hi.
Hi there, you have up to five minutes, uh, whenever you're ready.
Awesome, perfect, thank you for, um, having.
Awesome. Perfect. Thank you for having me. I'm actually twenty-six years old from Toronto right now, and I'm looking into moving to Vancouver just on a year-by-year basis right now, and I support this secured rental market unit project because of the importance of housing affordability. So as you may know, Toronto is almost just as expensive, if not even more sometimes. So it's important for people like me who don't really see a benefit right now in the increasing cost of home ownership and permanent relocation to just have like many choices and vacancies for where I choose to work for the next few years until I settle down to purchase a property of my own. So right now, what I know is that there are rental vacancies below market value, and something like this would give me a better incentive to move into a city with less worrying about where to find my next job or any relocation costs. And I think this is pretty purpose-driven because for people like me who are coming out of province, who also live in different provinces like Calgary, the inconvenience of relocating or finding a job just to meet the market-level rent when a lease ends is really inconvenient and it just makes me want to stay in my parents' house forever. So I think the proposal area for this, as someone who's only visited Vancouver for a few times, it's a great stimulus to support local businesses because of how convenient it is to like transit hubs, and it could support more interest in population growth from people in other provinces like me and increase mobility for people with lower or medium incomes as well. And that is all.
Okay. Thanks so much for your time tonight. There are no questions for you. Just wanted to say thanks, and we'll move on to the next speaker. We've got Peter Walker. Oh, yes, Peter Walker.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, Ken. Please go ahead.
Great, thanks. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm calling in to support these homes. Everybody who's paying attention knows there is a shortage of housing in this city, particularly for rental housing. The existing rental stock is full. For years and years, there's been a persistently extremely low vacancy rate. You know, my parents were immigrants to Canada. My mother was a refugee. They met in Toronto, and they're able to come to Vancouver without jobs, without connections, and build lives for themselves and their family here because they're able to find affordable rental housing in the West End. Now, that was in the sixties, and I worry that that is no longer possible. A previous generation built the West End, but now here we are fighting over individual low-rise apartments like this. And as a result, somebody can't just come to Vancouver anymore because there just isn't enough housing. It's all full. The city has an empty homes tax, the province has a vacancy tax, we have good data now on empty homes, and there just aren't that many of them. And we all know that if you allow these homes to be built, people will live in them. And that is itself, those people, a benefit to the community and to the whole region because the entire region is connected. If you don't allow these homes, the people who would live here, they'll have to live somewhere else, or because their housing is full, that means they'll either need to leave the city or push someone else out. Either way, that drives up rents and fuels sprawl and the climate crisis. And yes, it drives rents up. You have heard tonight from people who are middle-income earners, at least, who are desperately looking for rental housing. And you know what causes rents to go up? That these people are competing with low-income earners for basement suites and old apartments built in the sixties. Now, what do you think will happen if you don't allow these homes? What happens to the people who can't afford to pay these rents? They don't disappear into the void. So yes, building housing like this helps keep rents down. You just need to build a lot of them because the need is huge. Now, I also want to observe that this project is brought under the Affordable Housing Choices Interres zoning policy, and that policy expired in June twenty nineteen under your watch. It was supposed to be replaced by the Rental Transition Zone Policy, but that also was not passed by you. It came back, reducing scope as a streamlining rental policy, but that was over a year ago, and it still hasn't been passed. I think it's in some sort of consultation limbo. So right now, under your watch, there's a huge gap in the city's housing policies because as it stands right now, as I understand things, there is no path for a modest, low-rise rental apartment building like this one to proceed. You've also heard about the problems of building housing on busy arterials, and I agree. I think the big problem that we only allow renters for the most part to live on busy, noisy, dangerous arterial streets. But right now, you don't have any policy that allows housing like this on quiet side streets. You let it expire without a replacement. So I urge you to pass these homes because without an existing policy to allow for more of them, there's going to be a gap in the housing pipeline, and the city badly needs homes like these. So please support them.
Thanks for calling in, sharing your thoughts, and there are no questions for you, so we'll say thanks for participating tonight and move on to the next speaker. Council, the next speaker is Angel Trin, speaker number eighteen, Angel Trin.
Mayor, speaker number eighteen is not on the line.
Okay, thank you. We have speaker number nineteen, Monica Strike?
Mayor, speaker nineteen is not on the line.
Okay, thank you. The last registered speaker is Jimmy Chan, speaker number twenty.
Hello.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Oh, thank you. I'm really opposed opposed this proposal and also the location. And the reason is that the area is a single-family housing area. If we have a six-story building built up there, you have high density and you're distributing the peace and quiet of the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
And also, and the four thousand four hundred block, it says a short block. I wonder why the developer not taking the whole block instead of just taking four houses and left two houses behind, right? So what about the 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 how the people live in that house? And suddenly they found there's a huge building built beside their house, you know? It's just disturbing them and also all their privacy is gone. And also with the high density, increased density, and there's there's more traffic and could be more crime, right? And also, the night street is a very high-traffic street. And also, if we have those high-density buildings built up there, you know, with the young children running and on the sidewalk, even though I walk on the sidewalk, I don't feel safe because it's it's traffic and a pass by you, right? So this is unsafe location. So if
Is that it?
I think if they want to to do a building, they should take up the whole block, and then this should be, at least there's a bit, two-street length separate from the single-family home. If the resoning is for the for the rowhouses or townhouse, I'm not opposed, I'm not against it, but but this huge building built up there, no, I'm really opposed, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. There are no questions for you, so we'll thank you for calling in tonight. Council, that is the end of our registered speakers list, but I am going to now call for other speakers. If there are anybody else who'd like to speak to this, please call one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, code fifty-three forty-eight three five three four eight three pound. And I'm going to ask the clerks, is there anybody in the chambers or on the line?
Mayor, speaker number four, Christina Chan is on the line.
Okay, Christina Chan, please go ahead. Hi, Christina Chan. Hi there. You ready to go? Hi.
Oh, yeah. So I'm thinking about this development, right? I agree that the younger people, they cannot afford.
So thank you for calling in tonight. The council, that's
What the heck? You turned it off. I cannot hear.
Uh, no, it's, I think you have the computer on in the background, so it's getting a bit of an echo.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay.
That's okay, no problem.
About the people, the young people being not affordable, but the thing is, when they build this building, shouldn't they be, call it, you guys call it affordable, right? But when I look at the prices there, a studio is like, they're renting out for sixteen hundred. I don't know if I'm old age or whatever, but if the younger people consider this a studio sixteen hundred rent is affordable, to me, that's like a downtown rental amount. And is that really affordable, like for people? Yeah, sixteen hundred dollars, you can actually really pay a mortgage for that. So I'm not sure about this really, they call it affordable housing, because affordable to me means like, like for a studio, maybe eleven hundred, that would be affordable, not like sixteen hundred. So I don't know what it is, but that's my opinion. And second of all, when you build a building like that, is there, there would be more crime to the name, to the house that is not being built, the two houses that are not being built? Are they doing anything to to the corridors, like building a fence or something like that to, you know, to protect the to the houses that are not being built? That like that? And also, is is why is it that they didn't purchase the whole lot, the whole block to build if they want more affordable housing? That's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for calling in. There are questions. Councilor DeGenova, over to you, up to five minutes.
Thanks so much. I was just hoping that you could elaborate a little bit on why you you would think there might be more crime next to the building as if if this is approved and it moves forward. Why would you think that there would be more crime next door?
Because more people are living there, right, in the building? All lots of people going in and out and and now, the parking would be less because they are only building even not even half of what their the units are. So obviously, when they're renting out, the they only have twenty-nine parking space. There won't be that much. And then so people would be parking, finding parking or going across the corridors and their their corridors to go to the parking, and the house that's next to the building, if they're not building a high fence or something, people can literally walk across to the to the to the house next door. Who knows what what type of people it is? Then what kind of protection is there to the to the people that live next to the building? So that increase the traffic of the traffic flow because of the the rental, all these different, all the different rental units, and also the 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 main floor for those traffic. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you for sharing your opinion on that. I also was was wondering, you you had mentioned you weren't sure why they couldn't buy or why they didn't buy the whole block. Are you, do you have any knowledge? I mean, it's obviously hearsay, but but do you have any knowledge? Did they try to buy it? Maybe the other owner said, no, you can't?
Well, the other, one of the units said no, but then is it, that's what the proposed person says, that because the city would object an orphan home, that's why they didn't buy? I'm not sure. So that's what I, that's why I got on.
Thanks for sharing your opinions with us tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And that's it for questions. Thanks so much. I'm going to call a second time now. One eight three 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 five three eight six one zero is the number to call. Clerks, with the second call, is there anybody else on the line or in the chambers?
Mayor, speaker thirteen is on the line.
Great. Thank you. Speaker thirteen, please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Yes, hi there. My name is Judy Fong. I live in Vancouver and I totally support this proposal. I'm going to talk regarding this in the terms of a teacher because that's what I am, because I think tonight you had a lot of people speak in terms of being a homeowner in that area. First hand, I think it's very beneficial to have secure, stable housing. There's nothing more stressful than students needing to move schools because the parents need to find a new place to rent. For families living in basement suites, that's the reality of them in a city like ours. That's why it's very important to have secure rental. So I heard from many parents that the cost of living in our city is making it harder for them to do things that they want to do with their children. Now, however, we also know that it's not just parents, teachers that need a place to live, and, you know, many people are choosing to rent. I think it's it's great to be able to own homes, but it's also having these rentals gives everybody an opportunity to live within the city. And I think that the rent that they're charging is pretty fair because it's going to be brand-new and the square footage is pretty good. Diversity of housing is options is really important. Residents need choices, and there's a huge demand for this type of housing. I think that having this type of housing in this certain area brings richness to the community. And I think if you look around in that neighborhood, it's close to schools, which is what I was talking about. There's quite a few schools in in that area, and it's close to park, and it's close to the Kingsington Community Centre, it's close to transit, it's close to a library, and there's childcare facilities in that area and bike routes. So I think it's a great idea to have that rental property there.
Okay, thank you so much. There are no questions for you, and I'm going to call a, oh, I'm just going to check with the clerks. Is there anybody else on the line?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional speakers, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to call third and final time for speakers of this item. Council, it is eight forty-seven, so we're going to take five minutes, and we'll come back at eight fifty-two. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, no new speakers.
No new speakers. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, so as we have no new speakers, we'll close the speakers list. And as we've received fewer no comments after, um, five P M., we're gonna close the receipt of public comments. And I'm gonna ask the applicant, uh, if the applicant has any closing comments. Applicant team, any closing comments?
No closing comments from the applicant.
Okay, thanks very much. Uh, staff, any closing comments?
There are no further comments from staff.
Okay, thanks. Counsel, any questions for staff? I don't see any questions on, oh, Counsel Bly, uh, please go ahead up to five.
Thanks, Mayor, and I'm just, uh, looking for some clarity from staff around the sizing of the units. Uh, particularly around the studio, noting that forty percent of this, forty-six percent of the units are studios. It priced it just below, well, the market is saying just below sixteen hundred. So trying to get some clarity around what we can expect if this development were to go through in terms of size of the units and, um, and cost of rent. To staff.
Yep, staff, uh?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Um, so the average unit sizes weren't included in the report as the applicants, um, weren't taking the D C L waiver. So, um, they weren't required to comply with minimum units, um, sizes. Uh, and so from the drawings, the average unit sizes for the studio spaces are approximately thirty-three square, square meters, um, which is three hundred and fifty-seven square foot. Um, and that would be an average size that we would see in typical developments across Vancouver.
Great. Could you give us just, could you just quickly go through the breakdown? Just, um, since you've got that information there, it's not in the report, but it, it, it's important.
Yeah, sure. So the, the studios, as we said, were thirty-three square meters. The one, the one bedrooms are forty-two. And the two bedrooms are sixty-five. And the three bedrooms are seventy-six.
Sorry, can, are you, do you have the square feet there just because that's typically what we operate in and when we're comparing apples to apples?
The one bedroom? Yeah, yeah, so the one bedrooms are four fifty-six. Um, and the two bedrooms are seven hundred square foot. And the three bedrooms are eight hundred and twenty-three squares, square foot. And that's all on average.
Okay, and then what we've got is the market rents. Okay, I'm just gonna pause there and take a look at some information. I hope you all come back on the list if I have more questions. Thank you.
Sure, thanks so much.
Counsel Dejanova?
Thanks so much. Um, I, I was wondering, you had talked, you had mentioned that the C A C, um, contribution that had been negotiated would be going towards childcare in the area. Wondering if you can tell me, understanding that the C A C would be paid at the time that the development permit, if not before the development permit is issued? Is that correct, first of all? The C A C would be required to be paid at the time, if not before the development permits issued?
Yeah, so the C A C would be required to be paid before the enactment of the bylaw, before the enactment of the rezoning.
So understanding that we have a reserve of C A Cs that don't exactly match up to, they were spent at the time that, that the, um, housing that they are linked to was perhaps delivered? I'm wondering when you can project this childcare to be delivered? Or the childcare that this would go towards, understanding there's not enough to provide a singular, singular childcare here?
Yeah, so the C A C funds would be pulled, um, from a variety of projects. Um, and those projects haven't been, I, I identified yet, um, but would be developed through the childcare plan in the future.
Okay, but the, the delivery date of these C A Cs, like when we would see them realized in the community for childcare would be?
Um, so we don't have that information yet. I don't think we have that information yet. Just saying that the proposal is not, um, has not been approved yet.
Okay, so if it were approved, would we see those C A Cs delivered? Can you give me an estimate, five years, ten years, two years? I might wanna move for another round of questions at this point. Yes. Unless I brought you, Mayor?
Um, no, sorry. Um, we don't have a specific timeline on that. Um, it's just, um, a pool, I'm a pool of funds, um, and we don't, and we don't have that set plan to spend those funds at this time.
Okay, uh, I'll leave it there then. I won't move for a second round of questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think you might be muted.
I, I sure am. Uh, Counsel Boyle, it is over to you for five.
Thank you very much. Um, and Steph, I'm just wondering, there was some discussion about on arterial and off arterial, uh, rental housing and the policy program that this bubble falls under, um, being, uh, not being open to new applicants anymore. And so I'm wondering if staff can update us on when, um, council might be hearing back on, uh, policies for, um, making it easier to build rental housing off arterial?
Yeah, sure. Um, so as we've said, the A H C policy was approved in two thousand and twelve. And then that was closed, um, to new applications in two thousand and nineteen. So these types of applications would now come to council under the, um, secured rental policy. Um, and so the S R P that's currently being reviewed by our housing policy team that removes the majority of Knight Street from the land that can be rezoned. Um, and so these updates will be, be presented to council on November fourth. Second, sorry, November second.
I have many other questions about that, but I'm conscious they're not, they're policy questions and they're not specific to this project. So I am going to reluctantly hold them and, and really look forward to hearing more about those options, uh, in November. Thanks for that.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Counsel Bly?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, just a quick follow-up. I'm just curious, um, where the information is that, um, where do staff gather their information based on, um, average rents? And do we calculate that on a per square foot basis?
Um, so the average rents are taken from the two thousand and nineteen C M H C rental market survey, um, survey. Um, and the average rents that we showed in the presentation were for buildings completed in the year two thousand and eleven or later on the, the east side of Vancouver.
Okay, so I'm looking at a report that talks about a three point, uh, three dollars and fourteen cents per square foot is the average rent in August for downtown Vancouver. And, um, it's, it's a rental platform that does, uh, a bunch, uh, uh, sorry, does the, um, number crunching for, on a monthly basis. So I guess my concern here is just trying to reconcile the size of a two hundred and fifty-seven square foot apartment for sixteen hundred dollars, well above three dollars and fourteen cents per square foot, which is the average rent, uh, right now. Um, so, and granted, new buildings and what have you, there'll be some, um, impact there. So I'm just gonna have a quick follow-up question, if I may, um, and that is regarding, um, well, I have a, I have a question around mental health. I have a question around the research that we do as in city planning when it comes to livability and the size of a livable unit. Um, and how that, my, my concern here is the proportion of, um, studio apartments in this proposal at forty-six percent. So I'm just trying to understand, where do staff sort of wrestle with that or do you at all? And, and if you do, how, how can council start to sort of responsively consider applications like this when the livability of these units is, um, I would say, well below what we would typically see come forward and typically have in terms of available rental stock in the city?
Yeah, thanks so much for the question. I'm all past these through our senior housing planner, um, who'll be able to help find us out with your answer.
Uh, thank you, uh, Jim, and, and thanks, thanks for the question. Um, I think that, uh, you, if I can understand your question, there's a, a couple of questions in there. The first has to do with how we would look at the average market rental rates. And, and Jim is correct that we would look at, we would look to C M H C data to be able to determine what the average market rental rates are. But then your follow-up question, as I understand it, um, also has to do with the, the number of, of studios and then the size of those studios. Um, I'll note that the, you know, the applicant isn't taking the D C L waiver. And, and if they were to take the D C L waiver, um, there, there's a maximum unit size, uh, and they're over which might be part of the reason that they're not taking the waiver. Um, but right now, uh, the city, as, as I'm sure you know, has, uh, policy with regards to securing, uh, family unit mix of two and three bedroom units. Um, but we, we don't, um, have a specific policy around the total number of studio ones. And when we see a higher number of studio units, we do often recommend, although we can't require, um, that they try to convert those into either one bedroom units or even better, uh, the family unit mix, uh, that, 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 you know, we just don't have as many two and three bedroom units in these projects. Uh, unfortunately with policy, it's just, we don't have the policy to require it. Does that answer your question or questions?
Um, yes, it does. Um,
Thanks, and actually, uh, Counsel Bly, I let you go over time here to, cause you've held a few chunks of time. So although your clock says four twenty-two, I've now given you extra thirty seconds, so I will move on to, uh, uh, Counselor Dominado.
Uh, thanks, Mayor, and yeah, it's a question to staff. Um, we have a motion, sorry, an amendment coming, uh, from another counselor. And I, I just wondered if you could address it now in terms of the question of, um, uh, adding conditions to, uh, to this application with respect to pollution mitigation? And is that something we've done in, uh, with previous applications? Is that already included within conditions, uh, within the, um, application, if you could just comment on that?
Uh, yes, so we have done this before, um, and we can, um, and we can add a requirement to appendix B of the report. Um, and this is definitely something that we can work with the, the, the applicant through the development permit stage, um, just to refine this work and to ensure that we can get good outcomes on this.
And, and has the applicant already indicated that they were undertaking some measures, mitigation measures? Or is that already addressed? Sorry, I apologize if it was addressed previously.
Uh, so no, they have, they, they have not indicated that, um, they, um, would be involved in this extra work. Um, but there are requirements that do, that, that do exist under the green building policy, um, that they have to, um, that they have to comply with.
Um, and just while, while we're on this track, um, because I think the subject of affordability has come up quite a few times, both from speakers and, but also from counselors, would, in, um, adding conditions, um, would this then potentially add additional costs to the unit and rents?
Uh, yes, so these things could add extra costs, um, but we would seek more clarity on this kind of at the D P stage with the, the applicant, um, and work through this, just, um, just to try and maintain that balance of affordability, um, but also the performance of the building in terms of pollution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Swanson? Counsel Swanson, I think you might be in here.
Sorry.
That's good.
I thought I heard, uh, staff say something about removing Knight Street in a report that's coming up about rental housing. Could you maybe elaborate on that? What is Knight Street being removed from and why?
So there are updates coming to the secured rental policy, um, that will be presented to council on November second. Um, these have been going through community, community consultation this year. Um, and there have been changes made to, uh, the eligibility maps in council last sort of proposals. Um, at, um, at this stage, they're still being developed, um, and there's no final plans. Um, but do expect to see some changes being presented to council on November second.
So if, but is, why would Knight Street be being removed? Is it because of pollution?
So not specifically, no. There's a number of locational requirements included in the new, uh, secured rental policy. Um, I haven't been involved in the development of the policy and I don't understand all the finer details. Um, but this is definitely something that will be explained to you in full of the November hearing.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, that's it for, uh, questions from council. Uh, so I guess we can have somebody move the, uh, move the, uh, report?
They'll move, Counsel Dejanova.
Thank you. Uh, Secander?
Counselor Boyle.
Thank you, Counsel Boyle. Okay, we're in the debate now. Uh, Counsel Swanson?
Yep, I submitted, uh, an amendment around the pollution. Um, basically to ask staff to require the applicant to ensure pollution mitigation. Measures are incorporated into the, the design.
Okay, thanks. And that's on the public screen, uh, council, if you
Point of order.
Need to see it. Uh, yes, uh, Counselor Dejanova?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Stewart. I understand that we're in a public hearing, which is a quasi judicial body. And I state this because a motion out of order, uh, under, uh, section eight point seven, section B would be conflicts with the law or a bylaw or is, or A is not compatible with the purposes and objectives of the Vancouver Charter, including the good rule of government of the city or the health, safety and welfare of its inhabitants. And I just wanted to state that I believe that we already, um, in our Greenest City policies are addressing this. And to make one specific, um, uh, application comply to something that we have not made the rest comply to, I think would be unfair. It would be against the rule of good government. And I think it conflicts with a law or a bylaw, as in, we do not currently have one, as Counsel Swanson just asked a question. It's coming forward a later date. We have to hold this to the policies that we have now.
Can I ask you, are you asking for a ruling on this?
I am asking for a ruling on this.
Okay, thanks so much. I will, um, uh, so you're asking if this is in order? And I will need to name your specific, uh, parts of the charter. Uh, so I will, uh, get back to you, sorry, the procedural bylaws, and I'll get back to you shortly.
Yes, thank you.
Council, I have checked and it does look like this amendment's in order. So, um, uh, we'll move ahead. Councillor Swanson, you still have the floor? And your clock's running.
Well, I just think it's, um, really important that we start looking out for the health of people who live on arterials, especially with these studies coming out that are looking grimmer and grimmer. Yeah, that's just basically it.
Okay, do we have a seconder for this amendment?
Second by Fry.
Okay, thanks. We're on amendment queue now for debate. Councillor Dejanova?
Thanks very much. I understand that unintended consequences often can lead us in the direction that we, we have not intended in our policies and in our city. And I appreciate that each of us have policies that we hope to see come from motions that we've moved forward. But I also understand that public hearing is about consistency and fairness. And, you know, I know that when we all voted, I look back to the minutes right now of, um, you know, looking at, uh, sort of our industrial districts and zones, such as, you know, Lululemon's application. And, uh, you know, a vote in favor by the councillor who's put this amendment forward, that this was not a requirement there. However, that was voted for by that councillor, um, including the money that would go with it for the childcare. Uh, there is money for childcare here. There are new homes that we've heard passionately, uh, uh, from, uh, the public. Some people who are looking to be able to afford a home desperately right now. And I also wonder if this will, um, set a precedent, uh, that we will have to deal with later on. Will we do this to a nonprofit that comes to us with an application on Knight Street? So I certainly will not be supporting this for that reason. I think that the goalposts in public hearing have to be that we adhere to a policy that we don't just tack on additional costs that will then, you know, I appreciate this because last term sounded like a broken record. But it, it literally comes down to passing those costs on to the renter, to the homeowner, to those who are struggling to be able to survive. And, you know, when we look at square feet, you look at that one square foot you may never use in your home. To a renter, that cost is vital. So for these, for these reasons, I will not be supporting this amendment. Although I do support overall us trying to make our city not only cleaner and greener, but healthier. But at the same time, I think to unilaterally, uh, apply this to one specific rezoning is unfair. And I think that it could actually hinder the costs that we see now. It could make the pro forma unworkable. I'm not sure what that will mean. And if we hear from a nonprofit that's providing housing two blocks down on Knight Street, that they're, uh, you know, if they come to public hearing, they're not held to these same criteria. How is that fair? So I look at us as a quasi judicial body when we sit in public hearing. And that's the reason I will not be supporting this. And I want to make that very clear because I do support overall finding ways, uh, to mitigate, you know, pollution. But at the same time, I think that we have to look about, look at treating this fairly and what we could lose here. In some cases, this council has voted against townhomes or 13,000 square foot homes. You know, when we look at, okay, Lululemon will pay money for, um, a daycare and we'll take that CAC. Okay, well, I guess we didn't consider pollution in the industrial district, which may have actually more pollution in it than, uh, when, when I think about Knight Street. And, you know, uh, some of the mitigation factors that we'd be looking at here. So I know how expensive it is in a pro forma to add an environmental, not only study, but mitigation like this. And I, I would urge my colleagues just to vote against the project if they're going to vote for this because I'm not sure that the pro forma will be workable, but we can't even ask the applicant. Thank you.
Councillor Kerr?
Yeah, thanks. I'm going to be supporting this amendment. And I just want to, um, make note for councillors that actually the purpose of zoning is around health and safety. Well, there's other reasons too, but the history of zoning is very much around, um, the protection of, of public, um, uh, health and, and welfare. In separation of buildings, protection from fire. So there's a whole range of, of, uh, elements of zoning at that point to this. And I think that, um, uh, mitigation, mitigation measures around pollution is, it's something we should be looking at. And I'm, you know, it's not yet in all of the bylaws, but there's always a starting point. And, um, and it can move forward from there. But, I mean, I think we've certainly made huge moves in terms of mitigating climate change by the design of our buildings. That's definitely part of the building bylaw incorporated into zoning. So we often take on, um, major social issues, uh, as I say, for the protection of the, the health and wellbeing of residents through zoning moves. So that's why I'm supporting this.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Kirbyon?
Yeah, thanks. I wonder if I could ask a, a point of information through you to staff?
Uh, yes.
Great, um, thanks. I wonder if you can just help clarify for me?
Just one second, councillor Kirbyon, you know, I've made some rusty mistakes today. I just want to check the clerks on that one. I'll stop your timer.
Sure.
Clerk, can you get a point of information at this point in the process? Yeah, okay, I just got a note that it's okay. So please, I'll start your timer again. Go ahead, councillor Kirbyon.
Thank you. Um, I just wonder if staff can clarify or affirm that the applicant is required to or is adhered to green buildings process? And second part of the question, what might be included? Give us an example of a pollution mitigation measure that, and the applicant might be required to undertake or do that they would not be required to meet in green buildings? Can you help us with that?
Staff?
Yeah, thanks very much for the question. Uh, this is Derek Robinson, development planner. So we can confirm that this application will be meeting path B of the green, uh, buildings, uh, policy for rezonings. And, uh, in the case of the, uh, proposed amendment, uh, we could see this, uh, condition be satisfied through the development permit review process. It may, you know, involve reports by qualified professionals to demonstrate specific, uh, design measures. And, you know, some strategies might include filtered forced air ventilation and heat pumps, highly insulated windows and exterior walls, uh, and even possible reorientation of dwellings potentially. But again, that's something that we would work with the applicant through the development permit process.
Okay, that's really helpful in terms of specific examples. And, and just quick follow up on that also, a green, one, can you give us one example of something that they would have to do to meet the green buildings policy that's already incorporated here? It was really helpful hearing you list those other examples of pollution mitigation measures.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Uh, the green buildings path B policy really focuses on energy modeling. Um, and so there are specific targets that they need to meet. And the intent is that it can be flexible in how they meet it. But so it's really the outcome that is focused on and there's some flexibility in, in how they're, they're meeting it. But unfortunately, the architect would be better to give you specific examples in this case.
Okay, so more outcomes as opposed to specific features. Fair reflection back?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll leave it there for now. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Fry.
Yeah, just really quickly to lend my support to this amendment. I think it is important and I think our, our function, um, through public hearing, uh, and when we approve developments and stuff, will often make specific considerations for specific locations. You know, for instance, like, you know, flood level mitigation down in East Fraserlands and, and stuff like that. And I think it is important to recognize that, that we're talking about a designated truck route that is seeing an incredible amount of increased truck traffic, uh, from the port expansion on this very road. And, uh, and, and we know that diesel particulate matter has some pretty significant health impacts. Everything from, you know, cancers to low earth weights, children. And, and, and that it is in many respects somewhat more manageable because diesel particulate matter is so much larger in physical size that it can actually be filtered through some kind of mechanical systems that are not necessarily terribly expensive either. It's, it's really just a matter of putting the appropriate filter on the, on the air intake system, for instance. So, uh, I do support this. I think it's, it's an important consideration. And, you know, hopefully that we see more of this kind of consideration coming forward in proposals as a matter of, of process and procedure. You know, to take in those sort of environmental considerations and so that it doesn't have to be an amendment. But it's just a matter of fact, kind of thought that goes into these, this work. So happy to support it and the project in general. Thanks.
Councillor Swanson?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I am happy if we are setting a precedent with this. I think the precedent that we will be setting is the precedent of looking after people's health. And I think that's a good precedent to be setting. That's all.
Thank you, councillor Swanson. Councillor Dejanova, you have about a minute?
I just had a point of information.
Okay, just about a minute here. What's your?
Are we supposed to be setting precedents here or basing this on policy? That's a question for, for staff and maybe the mayor. Because this is a quasi judicial body and I understand we're supposed to be basing this on the policy we have.
Well, it's just about it. We're, we're judging a particular project.
I understand. I'm just wondering if this fits policy, if this amendment is in our policy currently.
I, I think the key, uh, the ruling on the out of order is that if it violated bylaws, then it wouldn't be allowable, but it's
So if I could hear from staff on the rest of that, that would be great.
Well, it's a bit of a rhetorical question, so.
I asked you and staff and my time's beaten up, so.
Yeah.
I suppose.
It's rhetorical.
It's not rhetorical. It's my question. You don't get to decide if it's rhetorical.
I do, and we're out of time, so.
Of course. My voice has been silenced again.
Okay, so that's it for questions to, uh, staff. And so we're going to, um, go to the vote on this amendment. Councillor Dominado, councillor Hardwick. Whoops, uh, works. Uh, you didn't, uh, you didn't get a chance to click my button there. For the voters, I usually just click bonuses to, uh, vote myself.
Mayor, I can mark you, uh, mark your indication on the minutes or we can take a revote?
Oh, that's fine. You can just mark me in the minute it says in favor.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
Do you just want to note who's in opposition? Sorry.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, councillor Dejanova in opposition? Okay. Great, we are back to the main queue. Councillor Swanson, you have four minutes left. You're on mute.
Is this speaking on the main motion?
It is, as amended.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to vote for it because the motion was passed and because it won't just gentrify and because it's going to be pet friendly. I do have a lot of reservations about it though. I don't buy the supply, 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 um, mantra as we have a lot of supply and rents are still going up. The units aren't affordable and councillor, um, Bligh made a good point about how the unit sizes are really small. So the argument that one of the speakers made that, um, you don't have to pay a $1,600 for a $1,600 a month studio, you can, uh, two people can move into one unit and split the rent. That doesn't work too good when you have really, really small units. But we do get pets. We do get some pollution abatement. And I don't think it'll gentrify because it's in a, a zone of single family housing, so I'll go for it.
Thank you. Um, next is councillor Boyle.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, and I will also be supporting the project. I absolutely think that we need more secure rental housing and we heard that clearly from a number of people. We hear that regularly, um, uh, at this council and at public hearings. And I want to, uh, say, as I've said many times before, that I think the historic practice of focusing, um, new rental housing on arterials is a big problem. And it is something we should have acted on already as a council. Um, I was disappointed that the secure rental housing policy, uh, looking at off arterial, um, got sent back for more consultation, but I look forward to seeing it come back. This is a, a great example of where building this type of rental housing, um, off arterial in the neighborhoods near Knight Street would be welcome, as we heard from one speaker. And, uh, would certainly reduce the need for additional costs of pollution measures, uh, pollution mitigation measures. And, and would mean that more renters who are looking for secure housing, um, to stay in the city are able to find a place to call home. So I really think that is the direction we need to be going. And I'm happy to be supporting this project, uh, as it stands today as well.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Dejanova, up to five.
Thanks. I have a point of information. I want to be clear, Mayor Stewart, that it's for staff. It's not for you. So can I ask staff?
That's good. Yes.
Thank you.
You did ask me last time though, uh, you included me in your.
I, I, I asked you and staff. I, I'm sorry that there wasn't time for staff to answer, but.
You did only have 20 seconds left though, so. Go ahead.
You didn't take 10. So for staff, I'm wondering if this could possibly make the project, um, the pro forma for the project, uh, not able to proceed? If these measures, because I cannot ask the applicant this question, if that were the case, what would happen to all of these affordable housing units that so many people have signed up to speak to us about? I'm just wondering what, what may happen? Will this add to the, I mean, because they technically are not paying a DCL waiver, they could increase the cost of the rent? That's my first question. And my second question is, is this project even doable? And if it's not, what would happen? What would, what would the applicant have to do in that case?
Uh, do your best, Steph.
Yeah, thanks for the question. Um, so it's likely that the changes will increase the cost of the construction. However, we don't know what that is yet as we haven't done the detailed work, um, um, to work out those costings. But it's unlikely that this would increase the cost of the rent. The rents are more, um, they're defined by the market rather than the cost of the building. Um, and so with, um, so as the applicant has not taken the DCL waiver, um, the rents are able to be set at that market rate.
So they can set the rents at whatever they want to. So they can set the rents at whatever they want and absorb the cost into the rents. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's right. But it's unlikely that the rents would go above the market rate.
Okay, but in the extra time that it may take them to do this, market rates may rise. Is that correct?
So there may be some extra time involved in redesigning some of the elements of the building. But I don't think that those changes would push the project out for many, or much time.
Can you tell me, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. It's not like you had this amendment much in advance. But wondering if you could tell me how far that could pu- push the project out considering now that the city must scrutinize. And, and oversee this.
Yeah, thanks for the question, but I can't estimate that time. I don't have the information on hand.
Okay, but is it fair to say that it, it could add time to the pro forma?
And so, and so there would be no time in the pro forma, but I mean, and there could be some.
But it could add costs. Is that fair to, is, is that a fair assumption at this point?
Yeah, so, yeah, so it may, it may well add costs, but at this stage, we don't know.
Okay, and then another question that I have is, i- if we apply this to this specific development on Knight Street. Would we need to apply this to every other specific development on Knight Street to ensure that we met our public hearing? Our, our, our public hearing procedures, that we treat all procedures by policy? As Counselor Carr very much noted, this is not yet in the bylaws, but it may be eventually. So I'm just wondering if we treat every project this way now?
So the, the requirement is not a change to the policy across the board. It's just one amendment to this project.
Okay, thanks very much. I, I will say that I will be voting for this. And I think that it's extremely unfair that it's picked and choose among specific applicants. I, I would have expected to see the counselor who moved the amendment to this, move this in the industrial area. Where, you know, I was prepared to move forward with the Lululemon application. But the counselor said that they were, you know, happy that there was a cash contribution, a large one of over millions of dollars. To daycare, so they took that, but didn't require any pollution mitigation. But here there is. So I would expect to see that from the counselor at every single application then, until it becomes policy. Otherwise, it's just not fair, I would say. And I think we have to be fair here or else people may not stop lining up at the city of Vancouver. And they may in fact choose to build housing other places. But I want to thank the speakers for coming as well, and that's all I'll say. And you did strike my clock a little bit.
Counselor Hardwick.
Really there. Thank you.
Thank you. Unlike the other two applications that we heard earlier, this one and the next one. Do refer to the Housing Vancouver Strategy as precedent for this policy. My analysis has shown that this policy is fundamentally flawed as it's based on erroneous underlying assumptions. We learned the summer data that we have been seeking to, to justify. This housing policy has not been made available because allegedly the city does not have it. So while this continues to be the situation, it makes, making decisions based on these policies. Problematic for that reason. So as was the case for me before the break, but for slightly different reasons now. I'm going to be forced to abstain on this. It has its merits. But again, every decision based on flawed policy is called into question on the, on that basis. So I just wanted to express my rationale and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Counselor Bly.
Thanks, Mayor. I do have a point of, are we allowed to make, yeah, point of information to staff?
Again, yes.
Just to confirm that the policy that this application has come under is no longer. Active or taking new applications. Is that correct?
Sorry, one more time?
My question to staff is that the, the policy by which this application has come in is no longer active or taking on new applications. I'm just verifying if that's true.
Yeah, I, I will just double check with staff on that one. Staff, go ahead. As a point of information?
Thanks for the question. Yes, that's right. This application, I mean, this policy stopped taking new applications in two thousand and nineteen. And this project has been grandfathered in through that policy.
Okay, and do we have any other in the pipeline under this policy?
Yes, so we have one more item on the agenda for this evening that's under, under the AHC. And I understand that there may be more projects, but I don't know the, and the updates or the timelines on those projects.
See. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I'll be following up with questions related to the part of the policy. That links sort of what I see as being staff's ability to work with the applicant to ensure that we are. Holding livability standards to the highest possible standard. Forty-six percent of the units at three hundred and twenty square feet is too many, in my view. For a balanced community, for a balance of, of units. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, it goes without saying that mental health is, is a crisis that we are also dealing with. Particularly in the city of Vancouver and the sort of silent mental health crisis is young people ages twenty-two to thirty-five, forty. Who are living alone in, in small spaces that they can't afford. And over forty-five percent of their income is going to pay for the rent in these small spaces. And we need to be, I believe, very mindful that it's not all secured rental all the time anywhere at, at all costs. We have to look at the merits of each project and make sure, are we actually doing right by those that will be said? That will be expected to live in, in these units. And what we know is there are buildings across the city that have taken six months or more of similar unit. And, and rental cost makeup as this building. That are not being filled right away because people are looking elsewhere before having to make this choice. I don't think it's the ideal. I think the live workspaces are excellent. I think the townhomes off the, the laneway are, are good. There's a lot of, Counselor Swanson's amendment is, is a good addition. But this piece of it, I think is, we haven't really, this application to me is not in the best interest of the people. That will be living in the, close to fifty percent of this building at the end of the day. And I, when I first saw this project a long time ago, I, I brought that up. And I, I still have major reservations about what's been brought forward. Having said that, it fits in the policy and that's what we're supposed to be deciding on here. So I am going to abstain from this particular vote on this project because I can't really support it. For the reasons that I've already articulated. And I hope that we continue to do everything that we can and put policy forward. That's really going to ensure that we have a reasonable level of livability. For, for people who are expected to work and pay and live in, in these units. So I'll, I'll leave it there. I recognize there is a housing shortage. I recognize our vacancy rate is low. But I still think we need to do our best to look at each application as they come in and make decisions. On each application and use that opportunity and our responsibility as elected officials to push back when we have to. To make sure that we're not just looking at dollars and cents in these projects, but we're actually looking at quality of life. And so I'll leave it there.
So much, that's it for speakers on this debate of this item. So I'll move us to the vote. Counselor Kirby and Counselor Dejanova.
For whatever reason, I'm hitting my button. It is not working. So if I could please have a vote assist in favor. Thank you.
Yep, a problem, Counselor Dejanova. Okeydoke. And that has passed with none in opposition. Great, thanks, counsel. We're, we have one item left on our agenda this evening. There are a whole pile of speakers that are, well, I wouldn't say a whole pile, not like some other hearings that we've had. But there are a large number of speakers. Let me just look here on the list.
I'd like to move to the resort date, Mayor Stewart, if that's okay?
Okay, I just want to move a, a motion to recess.
I am on the queue. I'm sorry if it's not the right time. I was hoping that that was helping out in what you were saying.
Just, yes, thank you. Just explaining to, to council that at nine forty, probably won't get through it. We could extend past ten o'clock, but I do know it's been a very long day having chaired all three meetings. So a little punch drunk at this point, so.
Happy to move that as we have another meeting tomorrow morning.
We would recess until Thursday evening at, I believe at six o'clock to hear item number six. You have a second for that one?
Second.
Thanks. Let's do a verbal vote. All in favor say yay.
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 Opposed, nay? Thanks very much. So we are recessed. The clerks, can I just double check with you that we've done everything right here?
Good to go, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, okay. Thanks, staff and everybody for a long day and we look forward to seeing you tomorrow. Thanks. Bye bye.
Mayor, thanks, Steph.